Everybody. So, good morning to the committee and all those listening to this recording. It is Thursday, November 9th at 9:30 AM. And this is the virtual meeting of today's planning meeting. I'm going to hand over to Dave Shaw, who's the Senior Democratic Services Officer, to do a roll call of members present today. Over to you, Dave.
Yes, thank you Chair. First of all, councillor Clea.
Present.
Councillor Evans.
I'm here.
Councillor Gordon Smith.
Here.
Thank you. Councillor Laming.
Present.
Councillor McLean.
If you can hear me, I'm present.
Yes, can hear you, thank you. I have apologies from councillor Reed. Councillor Raphael. Councillor Rutter.
Present.
And deputy today councillor Pearson.
Present.
Thank you.
We are quorum. And if I could ask you, Dave, to inform us which officers are present today?
Yes, of course, thank you. We have Julie Pinnock, Service Leader for Built Environment. We have Fiona Sutherland, the legal officer. For item seven, we have Catherine Watson. For item eight, Oliver's Battery Road South, Verity Murphy. For item nine, 112 Tengtown Meads, Liz Marsden. And item 10, for the morning, Warner Court, Cameron Finch. I'm David Shaw from Democratic Services and today we're supported by David Blair from Democratic Services as well. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much. Of few housekeeping issues, please can I advise that this meeting is being audio recorded and live streamed from the council's website. And a video recording of the meeting will be uploaded to the council's YouTube channel after the meeting, where it can be found next to the meeting's details, where the recording will remain thereafter. Although I'm sure they don't need reminding that they should keep their microphones and cameras off unless they are speaking. If they are referring to anything in the report, please could they give us the page number and the paragraph? I normally leave my video and microphone on, but I will turn those off if there's a long presentation. If members have any IT problems, please could you let officers know, as it may affect your right to vote? Members of the public who are speaking today, the same for you. Could you leave your microphones and videos turned off unless you're speaking? And don't forget to turn them off when you finish speaking. You will have three minutes to present your objection or your support. The clock will appear on camera so that you can see how your time is going. If there is or are any more than one person, then you will have to share the time allocated. How you share it is up to you. And afterwards, there could possibly be questions from the members of the committee to you, so please don't disappear straight away. You are very welcome to stay to the end of the meeting or leave whenever you wish. Members and officers, could we use the chat function? And Vice Chair councillor Rutter will monitor that and I will ask her every now and then who is waiting to speak. So without any more ado, I'm going to go on to the business. Apologies and Deputy Member.
Thank you Chair, to confirm, we have apologies from councillor Reed and we have councillor Pearson.
Yep, good morning councillor Pearson. Any disclosures of interest? I think we have decided that it might perhaps be best if you make those declarations before the item concerned, because possibly nobody will hear them otherwise. I do have a disclosure of interest for item 14. Personal interest which I would declare at the time of the application. I think councillor Clea, you have the same, is that right?
Yes, please, yes please Chair, if I may. Item, agenda item 14, I would declare at the beginning of that item, thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Any other declarations of interest? Fiona, did you want to say something?
Chair, I just wanted to be clear that the interest should be declared now and also declared at the outset of the item, because obviously lengthy day and we're not going to remember what interests have been declared at the beginning. So if you could actually declare your interest at the moment, any statements in relation to transparency, which I think we've discussed earlier, can be disclosed at the outset of the item. Thank you Chair.
Right, well I'll go first. I'm not too sure I understand what you want me to declare at this point, Mrs Sutherland. But this is, the item 14 is the extension to Wickham Surgery. I am a resident of Wickham and a patient at the surgery. And also I am the ward councillor, it's in Suffolk and Wickham Ward. I was asked initially by doctors to write a letter of support in principle for the application. I said I was happy to do so, provided I could reserve my position to consider it as a planning application, which is what I've done. So I haven't predetermined the application. And I will repeat all that, if that's okay with you, Mrs Sutherland, at the beginning of the item. I have discussed this with you previously. And councillor Clea, did you want to make your declaration?
Yes, yes, I will, thank you Chair. Agenda item 14, Wickham Group Surgery. I wish to declare a personal but not prejudicial interest. I am a patient at the surgery, a ward councillor, but I am also Chair of Wickham Parish Council, but did not take part in any of the proceedings when this application was discussed by the Wickham Planning Committee. Thank you Chair.
Thank you, and that reminds me that I am also a member of Wickham Parish Council, but took no part, this was decided at Planning Committee. I was present, I think, at the meeting, but I didn't virtually. But I did not take any part in their decision to support.
Chair, we have councillor Laming who wishes to make a.
Thank you, thank you councillor Laming.
Yes, I just want to say that I'm also ward councillor for the Oliver's Battery area, so I've taken no part in discussions on this yet, I'm completely impartial, but I think it should be noted in terms of fairness.
Thank you very much. Anything, any other declarations Fiona? I see your icon is flashing on the screen, did you want to come back?
Sorry Chair, that was a mistake. No, everything is absolutely fine Chair, thank you.
Okay. Members, anyone else want to declare an interest now? And possibly if it's later in the agenda, again before the item?
No more declarations of interest Chair.
Thank you very much. So we carry on with our agenda. So number three, membership of subcommittees, I don't believe we have any.
That's correct. Yes, that's correct, nothing to report on this item Chair.
Right, and then we go to the minutes of the last meeting, which was on the 22nd of October. And in our packs, it is on page nine, the report. To make it easy, if you could just, if you agree with the minutes, just unmute and indicate your agreement.
Agree.
Agreed.
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 Thank you. And nobody is not agreeing, so those are agreed. And then on page 17 of our report, we have the minutes for the 24th of September coming back to us. Because with apologies to councillor Kevin Andreoli of Denmead Parish Council, we wrongly put down in our minutes that he was an objector to the label that Lexington Ridge Well Hill Paddock, Hamburdon Road, Denmead. And in fact, he was a supporter of the application. So sincere apologies to him. The amendments are in red, on page 17, and we need to agree those. So same again, if you could unmute your microphones and indicate that you are agreement to that change to the minutes.
Agreed.
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 Thank you very much.
Agreed.
Thank you. And then item five, business items. We have quite a lengthy update report and we have to agree to accept this as an addendum to the main report. If members could indicate their agreement to the update sheet?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you, so that is agreed. Thank you. So that is agreed. So we move on then to the first item, which is agenda item seven. erection of a new garage with first floor stroke office store within the curtilage of a listed building, Broadgate Lodge, Broad Street, Oxford. We have three speakers who I will call upon after the case officer, Cat Watson, has given her presentation. And I can see that certainly one of the two of the speakers are here. So Cat, over to you to give your presentation.
Thank you Chair. But sorry, just having a slight. Apologies Chair. Julie's just trying to get the presentation to go to the full screen.
Yeah, apologies for the slight delay to those people listening. Sometimes it takes us a while just to get the sharing screen off of the presentation, which is what's going on at the moment. It won't be long.
Thank you Chair, I believe we're ready to start now. So the application is for material amendments to an application that was permitted in 2014 for an extension to Broadgate Lodge and also a new garage. The extension has been constructed, but the application, retrospective application has come in for the garage as it's not been built in accordance with the approved plans. So here we can see the approved plans. I've marked out the garage as approved in green. And then to the right, we can see the existing garage at number 52 Broad Street. And here we can see the approved elevations. So on the left hand side, you can see the front of the garage as approved. And on the right, next to it, the garage at number 52. And then on the right hand side of the screen, we've got the east and west elevations. Here we can see the new site plan. So the garage is marked out in red and you can see that it sit, the front line of the garage sits in front of the garage at number 52.
So. Can you just clear?
Sorry. So here we can see the site layout plan. So in closer detail, in red again, the proposed garage. And it shows that the building line is in front of the existing garage at number 52. And the garage plans. So you can see the top right hand corner, that's the roof. And then the middle drawing is the space within the roof, the habitable space within the roof. And then bottom left hand corner is the ground floor plan. And then the elevations and sections. So we've got those, south elevation, which is adjacent to Broadgate Lodge. East and west elevations, we've got a section through. And then again, we can see at the bottom of the screen, the garage as built and that being adjacent to the garage at number 52. And here we have some photos. So the garage has largely been constructed now. So the top left hand corner, we can see it adjacent to number 52's garage. Bottom right hand, again, that's just from a different perspective. And then we can see from along the access track. So the access track leads from Broad Street and there are a number of buildings and residential properties along this access track. Then a view from within Broad Street. So this is taken from where the central parking area is on Broad Street. So you can see the access track just here. And then the garage would be just within this part where the cursor is. And again, another picture taken from the far side of Broad Street. And you can see again where the trackway, the access track is and where the garage is. And that concludes my presentation. The recommendation is to approve, subject to conditions. And I'm happy to answer any questions, thank you Chair.
Thank you very much Cat. So we will move to public speaking. And the first public speaker is the objector, James Ekins. Good morning Mr Ekins. If you, you're muted, if you could.
Good morning Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yep. So when you're ready.
Right, thank you.
Three minutes.
Thank you. My name is James Ekins, I live at 52 Broad Street. I want to comment on four points. First is suitability. The applicant tried to develop this site in 2013, but withdrew his application after a report by the council's Historic Environment Team. He applied again in 2014 and was successful. There was no change in position or size of the garage between the two applications, notwithstanding that the report had stated, and I quote, "The proposed garage is too large in terms of scale and massing. It surely follows that any subsequent application which further enhances the scale and massing by bringing its profile forward and increasing the size should not be approved." Second point is listing. The case officer has explained, of course, the garage itself is not listed, but it is in a close listed environment. It therefore has a very strong effect on a curtilage listing site, which is mine next door. If the buttresses by the southern footing, that's the closed end, had presented a problem, the garage could have been built shorter, still leaving ample room for cars. The applicant has built the current structure in a position of his choosing and are in breach of the existing permission. The increase in profile of this non-listing garage may not seem major in terms of meterage, but the changes have a disproportionate harmful effect on the setting of my listed building close alongside. The effect is not trivial. I object under paragraph 125 of the National Planning Policy Framework. Third point, amenity. On page five, halfway down, the report states, "It is not considered that there will be any additional harm to the amenities of neighbouring properties. This may perhaps be the view of a busy case officer, but it does not accord with the report of the Historic Environment Team already quoted. Should not their export team be given the greater weight?" And retrospection. I drew the attention of the council to this unlawful building in mid-June, more than five months ago. I repeatedly informed council officers the building was going ahead. Corrections could easily have been made then without problems, but no action was taken. It even took a whole month just to get this application onto the council's website. My letter to you, Madam Chair, referred to justice delayed being justice denied. I do not deserve to be penalised by council's maladministration. The case officer's opinion and recommendation crash with expert opinion. The setting of my listed building is adversely affected. This could have been prevented. I oppose the application.
Thank you very much Mr Ekins, thank you. Members, does anybody have any questions for Mr Ekins? I'll just wait a few minutes, Mr Ekins, for members to put their questions or indications to ask questions on chat. And then I will ask of the Vice Chairman, councillor Rutter, are there any questions?
No questions indicated Chair.
No, so thank you very much Mr Ekins. If you could turn your video off, I see you've already turned your mic off. And obviously you will stay with us for this application.
I'm sorry Chair.
Yes.
We've got a rather late question coming from councillor McLean. I apologise councillor McLean, that just, has only just popped up.
Yeah.
My apologies Chair.
Thank you, it's rather late because I'm having some technical issues.
We've got Mr Ekins back. Councillor McLean, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much Chair. Mr Ekins, you made, I think, a very wise, or a very wide, well, two points I'd like to follow up. And you say, to break the planning permission, I think was in your statement. I wonder if you could just expand on that very slightly, because this is retrospective.
It is retrospective, well, he knew that it was in the wrong position. I went round and spoke to him. I showed him my copies of his drawings. He took them away from me without comment. He posted the drawings back through my letterbox, three days later, without comment. And I then learnt that from the council officers, that there was a new planning application in. There was no discussion at all. And we could have resolved this matter. He could have had the building just slightly smaller and kept the front of it, with the obtruding part, in this position which was already approved.
Thank you. And could you just expand on a second point, that you'd spoken to our planning enforcement team to explain to them what's going on? And how long did it take for this to come to any action?
I tell you exactly. I went round on the 17th of June, it was a long time ago now, plenty of time for the garage to be built afterwards. And on that evening, I informed your enforcement officer, Mr Dempster, about that. He went round on the 18th and spoke to the applicant. This was the 18th of June. I heard nothing more at all until Dempster told me that there was a new application coming in. I had no idea about that, of course. I hadn't been told by anybody until Dempster told me. And this arrived in very early June, first or second of June, July I believe. It didn't get onto the council website until the 4th of August. So all my pleadings and warnings could not be taken account of by anybody, because nobody had seen it, nobody took any notice.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you councillor McLean. Is that all councillor Rutter, for questions?
Yes Chair, no more questions, thank you.
Thank you, thank you Mr Ekins, thank you very much for coming back and answering.
Thank you, I'll mute.
And turn your video off please, thank you. And so now we move to one of the ward councillors, councillor Margot Power. Morning councillor Power.
Good morning Chairman.
When you're ready, you have five minutes.
Thank you very much. The problem I have is that now that this garage projects in front of the building line of the adjacent garage, it's very visible in the conservation area and in the setting of a listed building. It's no longer of a size or visibility commensurate with an ancillary building to a domestic dwelling. Interestingly enough, the fourth picture sent in by the agent, which is on the planning website, demonstrates how this garage dominates a very nice flat wall with brick coping, which is typical of the architecture in the conservation area. That contributes to our sense of place and if you detract from that, you take away from the conservation area. I just want to look very briefly at the history to which the planning officer referred. In the 2014 planning application, the extension to the house doubled the footprint of the building. When you look at the footprint of the garage, it tripled the building on this plot. To, in my view, an unacceptable density. Although the permission as given left the building line of the garage behind the adjacent garage, those wall buttresses were there in 2014. And we could have avoided having to bring the building forward by actually converting the planning, a revised planning application, to provide external access to the top floor of the garage, to allow for access. Now, section 66 of the Listed Building Conservation Areas requires special regard for the setting. In my opinion, this garage has no respect for the setting and should not be permitted in the conservation area or on the plot of a listed building. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you very much councillor Power. I'll just leave a few minutes for anyone to indicate on chat that they wish to ask for any points of clarification. Nice Chair, any questions for councillor Power?
No questions indicated on chat Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Power. And the final speaker is the supporter, the agent, Philip Piper. Good morning Mr Piper.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I hope you can hear me.
Yes, yes, and now I can see you, that's great.
Okay, thank you.
So when you're ready, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much for your time in allowing us to speak in support of this application. Clearly there's quite a lengthy history to the applications on the site.
We seem to have lost you, Mr Piper. Mr Piper, are you there?
Chair, we do seem to have lost Mr Piper. I will send him another link, see if he can rejoin.
Okay, thank you very much. I was beginning to wonder whether it was me that was isolated up with Mr Piper. Oh, Mr Piper, I'm afraid we lost you after your first sentence, so we'll start the class again.
I realise.
If you'd like to start again.
Yeah, okay. I was mentioning that there is a long planning history on the site. And the works of extending the building had been undertaken in line with the original planning consent granted. At the time of that work, the garage, which was part of the application, was not built and was subsequently started later this year. The original consent did not identify the brick piers on the wall to number 54, which obstructed constructing the garage as approved. At the time, a decision was made to construct the garage slightly further forward, a decision made for practical reasons without necessarily embracing the wider implications of that, resulting in the garage moving further forward. As Mr Ekins has pointed out, the enforcement officer was involved, came to the site, appraised the applicant of what he thought needed to happen and confirmed the garage under construction was not in accord with the extent of planning consent. And a new planning application would be required. It was at this point that we became involved in the process to prepare the revised planning application. And the building was already under construction. The application is different and it's not a minor amendment to the original application. It's a new retrospective planning application, not an application to change the original. The comparison between different drawings is quite difficult as can be seen in communications that followed the application. However, the applicant has not tried to misrepresent what is being built and applied for in this retrospective application. The application dimensions are quite difficult to interpret. And the fact that the building has been largely built and completed is helpful in being able to fully assess how it sits within the conservation area and within the setting of the listed building. The original application, approved application, there was comment from the Historic Buildings Team about the size of the garage in the context of the application to extend the dwelling. And it was considered in the group context that whilst the garage was larger, it would be acceptable. As can be seen, if you are on site now or go to the site now, if you look at the site from Broad Street, it is very little of the building is visible and you can only see the roof line of it. It is only as you approach up the narrow lane that the building becomes more evident. And only when you're right directly in front of it are you really aware of its scale and size. And in that context, it sits at the same height and same size as the garage to number 52.
Mr Piper, you've had your three minutes. So could you finish your sentence?
Yeah, I think in the context of the conservation area, this has no detrimental impact and should be approved.
Thank you very much. Now, there might be questions for you. I've got the first question. Given that there is a history attached to this garage, why was the decision taken, and I think that you were involved at the time, why was the decision taken to carry on regardless and build the garage?
The decision was made after the visit of the enforcement officer to the site. And he explained that continuing it, the view expressed, I wasn't present at the meeting, but I understand the view expressed was that the changes would probably be acceptable but would be subject to a separate planning application in order to regularise that. And any work undertaken to complete or continue with the building would be done at the applicant's risk. And that is something he was fully aware of.
Yes, no, I understand that. And applicants are entitled to carry on building at their own risk. But could I ask why an application wasn't put in at that stage, given that was the advice?
It was. That was, that is the resulting application that's before the committee today, is that application that resulted from that. And I wasn't involved before the garage was constructed, started construction.
But the building carried on even though the application went in?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I've understood that. Vice Chair, any questions for the agent?
Yes, Chair, we have councillor McLean. Thank you.
Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Chair. Just a short question. You suggested that the enforcement officer came out and visited and suggested that it would probably get planning permission if it went through as a planning application. I wonder, could you expand on what you were told by your client? That'd be my first question. Thank you.
I understand that the enforcement officer came and viewed the site on site. I wasn't present, so I can't vouch for this 100%. But the indication was that the changes were not considered to be so significant, in his opinion at that time, that it would not be an acceptable change. But it was always going to be subject to a revised planning application. And indeed, at the time, the indication was we should submit a listed building application and the planning application, both of which were done. So we did comply with what was the indication of the enforcement officer at the time. And he had consulted with his conservation colleagues.
Okay. And the second part of the question was, just again, to make sure I've got it exactly right, you did say that the enforcement officer said to your client that this would be at his own risk.
That's been clear, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Chair, we have councillor Pearson. With a question.
Thank you, Chair. Mr Piper, could you assure me that the dimensions of the garage are the same as the ones that were originally passed by planning committee? I appreciate the position is different, but is the garage otherwise exactly the same?
I think that if, have I got my microphone on? It is difficult to establish that because the original consent didn't have any dimensions on it. In correspondence, I've tried to be as clear as possible that the building is within scale of measurement. It's slightly larger in footprint, but that's subjective. It's difficult to measure all the drawings accurately. So what is built is built. I mean, that is clear.
Yeah. I appreciate what you mean about drawings not necessarily being scale drawings. But well, another comparison, is it the same size of the garage at number 52?
It projects in front of it and it is a different dimension, as I recall it. It's not quite, it's probably not the same dimensions, no. It's probably a slightly different width and it will be a different length. I think the one at number 52 returns all the way to the wall.
Yeah. And as I recall from the case officer comment, or perhaps your comment, the reason it was built farther forward is because of piers on the wall of the building itself or on the wall?
It's on the wall of the primitive wall of the site. And they are piers to the structure of number 54, Broad Street. So they are two, three, two or three piers that impose into the site, which weren't shown on the original architect's drawings when they got consent.
So are you arguing therefore that the garage couldn't have been built in the position on the plans because of those piers?
Yes, I would say the original couldn't have been built there because of those piers.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr Piper.
Thank you very much. Vice Chairman, any more?
No further questions, Chair.
So thank you. Could you turn your mute button on? Thank you very much. So Cat, as case officer, anything you'd like to add from what you've heard in the public participation?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I do have a few points of clarification to make. Firstly, with regards to the dimensions of the garage as now built. From the measurements that I've taken from the plans and also having been on site, the footprint itself is the same as what has been approved. The only change to that is that it's obviously been moved forward from the approved building line. And in terms of the appearance of the garage, there have been some in terms of positions of, there's a door on the side west elevation that's been moved. The roof lights have been moved. And also, the original approved garage had a cantilevered roof at the front. That has now been removed so that the front is a flat elevation rather than with the cantilever. So that was that. Also, in terms of comments from our Historic Environment Officer, she has no objection to the application. The views within the conservation area are very limited, as you may have been able to see from my photos. And in terms of impact on the listed building in relation to what's been approved, she determined that there would be no significantly harmful difference to the impact on the listed building. And then just finally, to do with the enforcement officer's visit, one of my colleagues, Oliver Dempster, he did attend the site shortly after Mr Ekins notified him. He then discussed the works with Rachel White, one of our conservation officers. And then I became involved. And so therefore, you know, the correct procedure was followed in terms of being invited to make a planning application retrospectively. The changes would need planning permission. And then it's down to the planning process to determine what level of harm there may or may not be. So I hope that helps just to clarify some matters. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah. And it's always disappointing when members of the public feel that they haven't been treated appropriately. But thank you for confirming that all processes were handled in the correct way. So I'm going to move on to questions for members of the committee. And any questions on pages 22, 23, principle of development, design and layout and the impact? Because those are probably the main issues. Could I ask, I'll start asking a question. In the Oxford, New Oxford Town Council, they, in the, oh, no, 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 sorry. It's in the objections. They talk about overlooking from windows. Which windows might that be? Is there any overlooking?
Thank you, Chair. No, there's, the only windows are the roof lights on the west elevation, which face, or the roof lights on the west and east elevations. They serve the upper floor. But there wouldn't be overlooking. The garage is in, the garage at number 52 blocks any views to that direction. And also because they are roof lights, they would be at such a level that they wouldn't any overlooking. And also the use of the garage in it's not going to be, it's not a residential property where you'd be using it on a frequent basis.
Thank you. Oh, Chair, any more questions?
No questions indicated, Chair.
I'll just wait a few minutes, but if not, then we will move on to debate. The debate?
We have councillor Pearson, Chair.
Councillor Pearson.
Thank you, Chair. These situations are incredibly frustrating. I can think of past planning situations where something similar has happened to my village, indeed, one just down the road from me, and also one, as I recall, across in Toberson. And then that's the case, it was a whole house has moved forward a metre. In the case of the other two, it was an argument about a garage. And the emphasis was on not the fact that the size of the building was different or the design of the building was different, but what was the environmental impact as a result of these changes? Now, in this case, we're advised that the dimensions of the garage are the same. Yes, the door has been moved, roof light's been moved, but I can't see that they would have any environmental impacts. So the only argument might be is the fact that it's 0.6 of a metre farther forward. And I have to say, looking at the photographs that the case officer has shown us, I can't see that that has an environmental impact either. So I can't see any grounds, therefore, for advising the applicant that they've got to pull the garage down and put it where it should be, which it couldn't be because the piers in the listed building and the listed wall. So there we are.
Thank you, councillor Pearson. Vice Chair, more contributions?
Yes, we have three councillors wishing to debate. Chair, we have councillor McLean, councillor Gordon Smith and councillor Laming.
Thank you, councillor McLean.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Pearson sums up my thinking beautifully. If it was going to be built, it would have to be built where it is. My, again, again, great disappointment in this that somebody felt they could just go ahead and do something without obeying Winchester City Council's rules on planning applications. So here we are deciding another retrospective application that was, as was said by our own officer to the application, at your own risk, subject to the applicant, at your own risk, when they carried on building it without planning permission. I think very, very seriously that we start, we start a process of reviewing how retrospective applications work and maybe gaining some teeth. Disappointed, but I agree with Frank Pearson, I can find nothing, or councillor Pearson, I can find nothing wrong with it.
Thank you. Councillor Gordon Smith?
Yes. Good morning, George. Yeah, I feel, I know this area well. I can remember when the original building was a shed with, kept for the previous owners of number 52 for her prize goats. And I think there's been a cumulative effect of more and more building in the area. And I remember seeing the original application back in 2014. And I have to say, I'm rather appalled that the architect who did that didn't notice these buttresses because there's something like a metre square and to carry on. Anyway, that's all past. Doesn't suggest a great level of competence. But I think that it's, you know, we are in the conservation area in one of the nicest towns in Hampshire. And it's very sensitive. And I am extremely unhappy at the way that's been carried out. I know that's not an issue. But I think it really does count as over the element in the area and detracting from a very sensitive location. Okay.
Thank you very much. And councillor Laming?
Thank you, Chair. We're told that with retrospective planning applications, you have to look at it as a completely new application. I'm extremely worried about the way that this has been presented in terms of the conservation area. I believe that we should have kept the building line in situ. If there's a building problem, that could have been dealt with in a different way. And I cannot honestly see why we should let this one go through as I think it defeats conservation area planning and everything else. So I shan't be supporting this one at all.
Thank you. Vice Chair, any more contributions?
No more contributions indicated, Chair.
Yes, I have just a few words to say. I have been out on site. We went out last Saturday in all that pouring rain. It does look as if it's larger in footprint, probably because it's next to the garage of number 52. And it is, of course, larger than number 52. But we've been assured that it is the same footprint as before. I think by moving it further north, it does make it much more in your face. And it indicates too, to me, that it's not subservient to the rest of the other building. It does look very odd. However, we, and you can see it from the conservation area. If it's found in Broad Street, you can see it. But you have, we have to be reasonable. And I don't think it would be reasonable to expect this to be taken down. But you have, we have to be reasonable and I don't think it would be reasonable to expect this to be taken down. But like my fellow colleagues, I am disappointed at the process we've got to to have to see it retrospectively. I think much more could have been done by the applicant at an earlier stage. And it could have been made shorter or something could have been adjusted to make it not so in your face as it is now. However, it's the original size that was approved and I do think as a committee, it would be unreasonable of us to expect them to take it down. But I hope the message is out there that the committee would rather not have this string of retrospective applications coming in. Right, having had my say, we'll move to the vote.
Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt, but councillor McLean has requested further debate. I don't know whether you wish to grant that.
And councillor McLean, you have spoken once. Have you got anything radically different to say?
I was just going to support you, Chair, when you said you were disappointed. I equally, along with other councillors, appeared to be disappointed that there's been a flouting of our policies. Thank you.
Hopefully applicant is listening and all those other people who are out there planning.
I imagine they don't.
Thank you. So we will move to the vote. This application has been recommended for approval. We have the conditions at the end of the report. And there are no extra conditions. Oh, no, we don't have conditions. Oh, yes, we do, just one. On page 24, no extra conditions on the update sheet. So I will pass over to Dave Shaw to give a roll call of members who will indicate how they intend to vote on this application.
Yes, thank you, Chair. First of all, councillor Clea?
Disappointed, but four.
Thank you. Councillor Evans?
Four.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
Against.
Councillor Laming?
Against.
Councillor McLean?
Against.
Councillor Raffel?
Stay.
Councillor Rutter?
Four.
And councillor Pearson?
Four.
That's four in favour, three against and one abstention.
So that application is approved. Thank you. About to move on to agenda item eight. We need a very short break, officers to change over offices and get the presentations ready. Verity is the case officer.
Yes, please, Chair, if we could just have one minute, says the officers.
Okay. Listening to the recorder, there'll just be a one-minute pause.
And Chair, to let you know that the members of the public and the Ward Council for next item have been let into the meeting as well. Thank you.
And Mr. Smith and Mr. Farthing are aware that they have to share the three minutes.
Chair, just a question. Is there going to be a wash-up at the end of the meeting?
There wasn't intended to be one, but we can have one if you wish.
It depends if anybody else is in favour of it, that's it.
Okay.
Or if there's time at the end of the morning session before lunch.
If we get to that luxury, yeah. No, we'll have a quick wash-up at the end of the day. It's always useful, isn't it? Apologies to those listening to the broadcast. It's always difficult when you can't see what's going on. But we are changing over the case officer and we are changing the presentation screen. And so this is part of being in a virtual meeting, I'm afraid.
Chair, we are ready for the next item.
Great, okay. So we move on to agenda item eight. 19 stroke O2852 stroke F U L. Amended plans, which came in on the 30th of June 2020. And the application is to redevelop the land at the rear of 93 to 95 Oliver's Battery Road South to provide seven new dwellings. The case officer is Verity Murphy. And good morning, Verity.
Good morning, Chair.
And when you're ready, we're ready to hear your presentation.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, so the site is shown in red on the location plan. Sorry, Chair, give me one second, just waiting for the mouse to load. Okay, so on the satellite image, there is an existing parade of shops shown here. And the application site is situated behind the parade of shops. There are more shops on the opposite side of the road. And the surrounding area is characterized by residential development, which is fairly linear in its nature. These photographs are standing, these photographs are taken while standing at the rear of the site, looking back at the parade of shops, which are here and here on the photographs. There are residential units at the first floor level of the building. On site at the moment is a derelict building. There are also some garages and both are to be removed through this application. The original plans which were submitted orientated the dwellings away from Oliver's Battery Road South and created a sort of courtyard-style development. The revised plans have reorientated the dwellings in a more linear formation to better match the prevailing pattern of development in the area. Here we have the elevations of plots five, six and seven. So this is the front elevation of those properties. And here we have the rear elevations. Plots five, six and seven are shown here on the site plan. They're outward facing and address the street scene. On the ground floor of the plots is a living area, a kitchen and a small toilet. So this top photograph is taken standing in Oliver's Battery Road South, looking back at the application site. So you've got the existing shops here and the front elevations of plots five, six and seven will be viewed through the gap here. There'll also be glimpses of the elevations of plots five, six and seven when travelling northwards along Oliver's Battery Road South. Here is the southern elevation and northern elevation of plots five, six and seven. You'll note that there are no windows in these end elevations. And each of the units has two bedrooms on the first floor. So here we have the front elevation of plot four, plot three, and then we've got the apartment block. Plot one is on the ground floor and plot two is above. And here we have the rear elevation of those units. And they are located to the north of the application site here on the site plan. So this is the southern elevation of plot four, which faces on to plots five, six and seven. And here we have the northern elevation of plots one and plot two. On the first floor of plots four and three are three bedrooms. And plot two is on the first floor over plot one, and that has two bedrooms. This photograph is standing in the application site, looking towards the northern boundary. And as you can see, there's quite a lot of intervening vegetation. This is also taken looking northwards and you can just see the roof of the neighbouring property there. So this plan shows a section of the site and shows the development. So you've got plots five, six and seven, a gap, then we've got plots four, plots three and the apartment block towards the north of the site. And the applicant is obliged under this application to replace the garages, which are to be demolished through the development. So they will be located here on the site plan. However, they won't be used by the occupiers of the proposed dwellings. This photograph shows the existing garages on the site. So there's some along the southern boundary and also along the rear boundary. The top photograph is standing in the site, looking towards the southern boundary. And as you can see, there's quite a significant amount of screening there. And this property here is the neighbouring property to the south of the application site. So you can see the relationship between this, the application site and the existing boundary. So the application is recommended for approval, Chair, and that is the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we will move into public speaking. First of all, under the objector slot, we have Nigella Smith and Roger Farthing. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. And you have three minutes in total, which you can share in any way that you want. And if only one person wants to speak, that's fine. Or if both of you want to speak, just be aware that I will stop you after three minutes.
I think we're trying to split it half and half.
Okay, it's up to you entirely. I don't, we don't mind. So when you're ready, please start and you have three minutes.
Do you want to go first, Roger?
Yes, I'm happy with that. Thank you. Good morning, Chair. Good morning, everyone. First, can I say that I will agree with everything that my neighbour, who's a fellow objector here today, has to say. My wife and I have many concerns, many objections, but given the time constraints, I'll summarise them into three main areas. The first is personal. Before we moved to this site, we were advised that there had previously been a plan for three, a number of small bungalows on this site. That was rejected by the council to now, so we felt fairly secure against future possible developments. To now see the possibility on this scale, we're horrified and very unhappy. To have seven two-storey properties so close to our home and overlooking our rear boundary will mean we're seriously overlooked and so are many others. We will have three properties overlooking our site and this will impact on our privacy and quality of life. Second is density. The density of this housing is totally out of character with everything else within Oliver's Battery. To the area, quite the opposite. In fact, it is not even in line with the council's own design statement for the area. Lastly is risk. My wife and I have seen near misses at the junction of the service road to Oliver's Battery Road South. Now, having vehicles from seven properties and also the garages would just exacerbate this risk. Vehicle on rip vehicle would be bad enough, but with the predominantly higher age of residents in the area, it's only a matter of time before there'll be protesting and having an accident with a vehicle. The development also had more risk to the junction with Badgers Farm Road, which is already known as hazardous. May I respectfully suggest that such a risk is a key consideration that should be placed well ahead of any targets or objectives that sit within any document that the council holds. Thank you very much. I've finished.
Chair, in the summer of 2018, prior to the plans being first submitted in December 19, the developer went to great lengths to get us as neighbours of Mountview Road involved with the planned development. These discussed with us and we were broadly happy with the outcome. In fact, they produced CGI graphics of what it would look like. The impact of the revised plans mean that all the houses and flats now have views down our gardens in Mountview Roads. And for the last 40 years, this has not been the case. There has been no subsequent consultation. After the existing area, behind the shops, it's currently used for parking by resident shopkeepers and customers of the five flats and shops. The seven dwellings get two spaces each, but the tenants of the flats and shops only get one space in a garage. And there is no space for customer parking or visitors. This will have a detrimental effect on the economics of the village centre and local parking.
Chair, three minutes. I'm sorry, Mr. Smith, I'm very sorry, I'm going to have to stop you there because you've had over your three minutes. Thank you very much. Thank you. But there could be questions for you, Mr. Smith and Mr. Farthing. Last chair? Any questions for the objectors?
No questions indicated, Chair.
No. So thank you very much for coming along today, Mr. Smith, Mr. Farthing. If you could just mute your speakers and turn your cameras off, but obviously please stay with us in the meeting.
Chair, before we move on, if I may just advise that councillor McLean dropped out of the meeting at the start of the presentation, but he has read all the papers and he's not missed any of the public session. He is back in now. So I just said I would raise this with Fiona Sutherland, if perhaps we could just have advice. Thank you.
Chair, I think it's comparable really to an actual meeting, that if one of the members of the committee misses the presentation, and it sounds to me as if councillor McLean has missed the presentation by the officer, then normally they would not be able to take part. And I think this situation sounds comparable, Chair. And if councillor McLean confirms that he did indeed miss the presentation, I'm most I'm afraid that he should sit out for the rest of the item. Thank you, Chair.
If I can come in there, I missed about, where are we? Let's go to the pages. I think probably the first two lines, sorry, first two pages of the presentation. But I had the papers in front of me and I don't think anything was said that was other than on the papers. But if your advice is actually, it's not me that did it on purpose. I was actually kicked out by my bureaucracy.
I'm afraid councillor McLean, that whatever Mrs. Sutherland says, rules. Fiona?
I'm sorry, Chair. As I said, it's comparable really to a situation where a member comes into an actual meeting late. And obviously, we're quite strict on that point. And I think, you know, unless it was literally a question of missing the first few seconds, normally we would say that the member can't participate in the rest of the meeting. I'm sorry, councillor McLean.
Okay, so sorry, councillor McLean, if you'd like to just carry on listening in until we get to the next item. We're still on public speaking and we come to the parish council representative, councillor David Kirkby. I can see you're there, councillor Kirkby.
Yes, hello.
So, good morning. When you're ready, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Chair.
Could you talk up a little louder, please?
Yes, sorry, I'll try and speak a bit louder.
Lovely, yeah.
Okay, this site is a local centre. And LPP2 confirms that it is important to maintain uses within these centres. The Oliver's Battery Parish Plan 2018 highlighted the importance of the local centre. Policy CPC 6 states that Winchester wishes to retain and improve the local facilities and services across the district. Furthermore, city councillors Lernie, Porter and Ferguson have all recently stressed the importance of small employment sites. The strategic planning team consultation highlighted that the site is not part of an agreed plan to improve local services. And the application is not supported by a report to show that the site was marketed as a local facility. A development similar to the existing facilities, namely commercial at the ground floor and residential at the first floor, was not tested. Seven new dwellings plus eight garages here over development on a small site of only 0.114 hectares. This was part of the reason the previous application for six terrace dwellings was rejected. Photos in the commercial viability report demonstrate the existing pressure with parking at the local centre. Namely, several cars are parked in the area behind the shops, which would not be possible if this application was permitted. Several of the local businesses rely on customers from outside Oliver's Battery. And all have confirmed that the amount of free parking is the single most important aspect. and all have confirmed that the amount of free parking is the single most important aspect that adds value. These proposals do not satisfy two of the three matters to be taken into account in Policy CP6. Namely, the loss of the facility would have a detrimental impact on the overall vitality of the local centre. And the loss is not part of an agreed plan to provide improved local services in equally accessible locations. The Oliver's Battery Village Design Statement states that the change of use of commercial premises may be permitted but not to purely residential and existing car parking provision should be maintained to protect the commercial viability of this area. The landowner has sought for 10 years to redevelop this site for residential. And allowing the building to become derelict has been helpful to this end. For these reasons, the parish council trusts that the committee will agree that the application should be refused. Thank you.
Thank you very much, very good timing. And so Vice Chair, any questions for councillor Kirkby?
Yes, we have councillor Leaming with a question Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Kirby, we're hearing all sorts of little bits from the two previous speakers. Would you like to comment on the parking of being used by people using the shops? Also, how you find exiting from that parking area onto the main road? Because they raised that problem, I just wondered what the parish council thought of that.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, the parking behind the shops, as I've said, is used for for customers using the shops and for the shop owners. The parking is not great in the area and this amount of free parking is absolutely crucial to the shop's viability. Even the presentation by the case officer that showed cars parked in that area. And certainly the commercial viability report, which has been prepared obviously by the applicant, also shows the parking at the front of the shops completely occupied and several cars parked in that area behind the shops. Clearly, if that development takes place, as somebody else has already said, that level of overflow parking cannot be available. Regarding exiting the site, that is quite a dangerous area to exit because the property adjacent to it, you've seen on the officers' site plans, that there is no vision, turning, looking right, if you want to turn left or right out of that junction. There's no, the property comes right up to the path. So you've only got, your car has to pretty much stick out into Oliver's Battery Road South before you can see what's going on. It is potentially dangerous.
The second part of the questions that I'd like to ask you is also, the report states that there is a bus service. Could you just enlighten the committee on the frequency of the buses in that area?
Well, that's, calling it a bus service is probably an exaggeration because there used to be quite a good bus service around Oliver's Battery. But that's been reduced and reduced and reduced and it only exists because of a subsidy from Hampshire County Council. So I think it's been reduced again recently. I think there's only two days a week, at two or three times a day, that buses pass through Oliver's Battery. So that's, you know, it's a bit of an exaggeration to call it a bus service, to be honest.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further questions Vice Chair?
Councillor Pearson has a question Chair, thank you.
Thank you Chairman. Mr Kirkby, picking up, there seems to be feedback here for some reason.
Ask councillor Leaming to turn off his microphone.
My fault.
Thank you.
Mr Kirkby, a number of the, well, the objectors and councillor Leaming implied and yourself commenting about the parking at the back of the shops. I know the shops, I've been there a couple of times and had friends close by there, so I know the area, but I don't know the parking behind. Who actually owns that space behind? Is it the owner of the shops or an individual shop or is it private land, i.e. owned by the developer?
Well, the shops, the shops on that side, sorry, the shops on that side of the road are owned, by my understanding, are owned by the same person who wishes to develop the site. So the whole of that site on that side of the road, including the shops, are owned by either a person or organisation.
So in that sense, the owner of the shops could in actual fact say there should be no parking on that site at all?
Well, yes, yes, they could do. I mean, they own the land, but that would be detrimental to the shops they already own at the front.
Yes.
They want to undermine their own shops basically by restricting the parking, that would be fairly, it wouldn't be the cleverest idea, would it?
Yeah, well, no, I agree not. And the garages that are being put in, are they also owned by the developer and the shops?
Yeah, well, the garages that have been allowed to become derelict and have to be replaced are tied in with the shop tenancies.
Right.
So the shops at the front own one or two of the garages and therefore they are linked to those, the existing shops in the local centre, yeah.
Okay, so the shopkeepers themselves could park in the garages, but quite clearly customers couldn't.
No, 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 no. I think they're also used for storage. I don't think, I'm not aware that any of the tenants use them for parking, they tend to use them for storage.
Right. Okay, thank you very much, Mr Kirkby, helpful.
Thank you.
Sorry Chair, but there are no further questions, you're muted Chair, thank you. Chair, you're still muted.
I turned off, sorry, because there was a lot of disturbance and I thought it might have been me. Yes, we're still in public speaking and the next public speaker is one of the ward councillors, councillor Eleanor Bell. Morning councillor Bell. And I did have councillor Williams down, but she's letting you do the speaking, is that correct? Councillor Bell?
Chair through.
Councillor Bell, is she there? Hello? Hello?
Chair, we do seem to have councillor Bell in the meeting, so everyone seems to be muted at the moment.
Yes, I thought it was me, but it wasn't me, you could hear me, could you? Councillor Russell?
Yes, we can all hear you councillor. I think we're having a problem contacting councillor Bell. Her icon is there, but there's no sound or video at the moment, so I think.
It's morning, isn't it?
I think, yes, it's one of those days. I think the officers are trying to get hold of her.
Chairman, yeah, thank you. We are trying to get hold of councillor Bell. If she can hear us, it might be that she leaves the meeting and rejoins. I know one of the officers is going to try and call her. And also, it would probably be useful when the speaker comes, if we could ask councillor Kirby to mute and turn his camera off as well? Because we do get a bit of feedback if we have more than two people with their microphones, don't we?
Councillor Kirkby, could you turn your video off as well? Thank you. It's the button with the camera on it. Thank you lovely. So councillor Bell, if you can hear me, we are waiting for you to speak. Fiona, we have to stick to the order on the sheet there, so we can't, the supporter has to speak last, doesn't he?
Yes Chair, I would recommend the supporter speak last, yep.
Okay. So we'll just wait a couple of minutes to see if we can allow councillor Bell to speak. We did originally have councillor Williams down, I don't know if she's, I can't see her icon here.
Chair, I can confirm that I spoke to councillor Williams yesterday and she had agreed with councillor Bell that councillor Bell would make a joint presentation on her behalf.
But we haven't got councillor Bell, so I was just wondering if councillor Williams was there.
No, she's not in the meeting, no.
No. The officers are in your hands really, how do you want me to proceed?
Chair, I am still waiting to see if we can contact councillor Bell, I will just make an inquiry now again.
Okay. So apologies for the silence on the recording. We are just waiting for one of the public speakers to get back in. She was in and now it seems that she's lost connection. I believe this is one of the downsides of virtual meetings, is that sometimes people's connections come and go.
Just give me a sec. Chair, could I explain to the meeting what we're trying to do? We can't get contacts through Microsoft Teams with councillor Bell, but we do have her on the mobile phone and we've brought the mobile phone into the St Giles room. So we're now going to place it next to the microphone so that she can make a verbal presentation.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
So, good morning councillor Bell.
Hello, I thought, I thought this was straightforward.
I'm afraid the audibility is not good at the moment.
I can hear, maybe I'll just talk, but I can hear a huge amount of.
You might be able to hear, but we.
Sorry, I can hear a huge amount of other stuff around this particular. Yeah, as I say, this particular thing seems to be.
Members, can you hear that? I can't, I mean, there's so much background interference, I can't hear what's happening.
Chair, Chair, it's.
Pretty well impossible.
Can't hear a word, impossible.
Okay. So I'm afraid that connection's not going to work. Dave, is there a plan B?
Councillor Bell, we're just going to give you another ring. I'm going to. Chair, on the mobiles that we had with councillor Bell, it was fairly inaudible. I'm just going to give councillor Bell a call from myself and just see if we can improve that line.
Apologies again to those listening to the meeting. I think it's the very first time in all our meetings that we've had this sort of problem. We have people not being able to get in or get in and then they lose connection. But we've never had this particular problem. Any updates? People trying to connect councillor Bell?
Chair, to let you know, we are trying to ring councillor Bell, but her line is now engaged for it. So we can't get through to her to connect her to St Giles room.
What about her landline? Is there not a way you can connect through the landline?
That is the number that we're trying to call at the moment.
Okay. Because I think we're going to eventually have to move on because we spent an awful long time waiting for this. Apologies Mr Murphy, I know you're waiting to speak after councillor Bell.
Chair, we are trying to contact councillor Bell, but her line is constantly engaged, I'm afraid. So we're not, we're not able to get hold of her to bring her on to the microphone into the, into St Giles at the moment.
Well, I think we're going to have to move on because we don't know how long this situation's going to exist. Is that the correct thing to do Fiona? You give me your advice here.
Chair, I think obviously there does come a point where we have to move on and accept that councillor Bell isn't going to be able to join us. I think maybe it's just worthwhile Dave just trying literally for one more try to see if he can get hold of her. Otherwise, she'll probably join us after the supporters spoken or, you know.
But that wouldn't be allowed, she wouldn't be allowed to speak if she joined us after the supporters, but.
Generally, I think it would be, it wouldn't be a good idea because obviously the supporter should be able to deal with any points raised. See what happens.
Chair, we've discussed it in the St Giles room, we've all tried to get hold of councillor Bell by telephone and I kind of see that her team's connection has improved. So perhaps if we, through yourself, if you want to move on?
I think, I think I will because we have been waiting almost 10 minutes for this connection. And so if you can hear us councillor Bell, apologies. Fiona, did you want to say something?
Sorry Chair, I was just going to say that I think, given what Dave has just explained, I think you've got no choice really.
No, no. So with regret, we're going to have to omit that part of the meeting. And we move on to the last public speaker, who is Jason Murphy. And, oh, I've just seen an email to say I am present and available. Just before you start, Mr Murphy, I've just seen an email flash up on my screen to say I am present and available from councillor Bell. Is that correct? Councillor Bell, if you are there, could you unmute?
With that prompt, we are now trying to call councillor Bell again on a.
Being in outer space, you know, you just don't know where anybody is or.
I'm afraid we've tried. I'm afraid we've tried again and the line's engaged.
Chair, I think that email was referring to something completely different.
Oh, right, because I haven't got the email open, obviously. Thank you councillor Clear. Right, so Mr Murphy, it is really your time now. We're going to move on. Good morning. So sorry about this long wait.
Thank you, Chair, thank you.
And when you're ready, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for your time this morning. Vivid Homes are a successful affordable housing developer. They manage 30,000 properties within the south of England, including Hampshire.
Mr Murphy, sorry to interrupt, we're just, we'll start you again. Do you think you could talk a little louder? It's very faint again.
Is that better?
Slightly better, but not, not a lot.
Let me just see if I can do it. Okay, I'll speak louder. Okay.
You have three minutes.
Thank you, everyone. Vivid Homes are a successful affordable housing developer. They manage 30,000 properties within the south of England, including Hampshire. They have a working, they've worked in partnership with Winchester City Council on many schemes and have a vested interest in success of every proposal that they develop. This scheme presented today is no different. The proposal for new residential development on vacant land at 93 to 95 Oliver's Battery Road. The site currently houses several dilapidated buildings dating back to when the site was used as a gardening centre. Following its closure in 2008, the site was then used for open storage, recycling and the selling of brick and rack. Situated behind existing parade of shops and apartments, the site has no street visibility. The previous businesses were therefore hugely impacted by the resulting lack of passing trade. This lack of commercial activity has meant that the site has now been vacant for a number of years and has therefore not provided any benefits to the community for some time. The site also includes a number of derelict garages which are leased to neighbouring properties. The existing dilapidated structures are unsustainable and cannot be reused. The most viable and sustainable solution is to therefore have these replaced with modern affordable dwellings. These new homes would be designed to be fully thermally efficient and would include integrated environmental technologies. These new modern homes, along with a new soft landscaping scheme, will deliver substantial environmental improvements to the site and wider area. The layout for a proposed residential development was initially presented to the neighbours along Mount View Road last summer, who were viewed as the most impacted by any new development. The scheme has however followed planning submission and been revised due to concerns from senior planning officers that the layout did not reflect the pattern of development along Oliver's Battery Road. The final layout presented to you today has been a product of coordination with the senior planning officers and now addresses their concerns. It also addresses several site constraints, including rights away and the need to supply new garages to the adjacent properties. We've also worked hard to ensure the concerns initially raised by neighbours continue to be addressed within the new layout. And these include reduction of storey heights, improved privacy to the rear of sites through the reduction of dormer windows. A detailed landscaping scheme will also be put forward to bolster the screening along the western boundary, which we note has been requested in some of the objections received for this application. We understand that some of the locals would like to see far fewer derelict dwellings on this site. However, the proposal for seven units must be considered in planning terms as an appropriate use of urban land at a time when there is a chronic shortage of housing. This is a scheme that we are very proud of. As always, we have worked closely with the planning department and have now a strong recommendation for approval. The scheme has been viewed positively and received no objection from any of the local authorities' consultants and subsequently has received a recommendation for approval by the senior planning officers. To this end, we want to thank you very much for your time today and we really hope that you'll follow that recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Murphy, and time to spare. Thank you very much. Members, any questions for Mr Murphy? Mr Murphy, are you the owner or the agent?
Sorry, I'm the agent, so I'm the architect.
I have a question, Chair, before anybody else comes in. Thank you. Good morning, Mr Murphy. I just wanted to ask about the garages actually, because the highways officer report says that they're not actually usable as garages. So perhaps they should be renamed storage units for the retail shops that they're serving? Is that, is that more accurate?
Yeah, I don't know. So in essence, they're all owned by the same guy who owns the site, who owns the shops. And they're all sort of leased out at the moment to a number of people in the area and adjacent properties. And I think that there is a sort of a period, that they're quite a long tenancy, some of them. So while some are being used for storage, and I guess some can't be used for cars at the moment, so I think some have wanted to dilapidation. I guess it's really up to those individual owners to use them for whatever they want to use them for, I suppose, when they lease them. So the requirement was to replace them with, with modern garages, replace those dilapidated ones. I think they're slightly larger because I think when these ones were first done, they were sort of designed for sort... Cars are a bit bigger now, so these will be far more usable. But unfortunately it will be up to the individual people who lease them, how they want to use them. So some, I no doubt some will be used for storage, some may be used for parking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a question from councillor Leining, Chair, thank you.
Councillor Leining.
Thank you, I have a couple of questions actually. One is, I'm struggling with this to some extent because I cannot see much difference between this and a previous application that was turned down on overdevelopment of this. And I'm also extremely concerned with the parking arrangements for that particular area and the loss of any parking spaces which would have a detrimental effect on the actual shops in the front. So if you'd like to run through that with me, I'd appreciate it.
Oh, sorry, okay. So with regards to the, obviously the loss of parking, I guess you're suggesting the people who would come and use the shops, so the impact on the shops. It is, it is private land. I know the owner owns the whole site. And it has been left open because I guess some of the garages, some, some people still sort of need to get to those and there is a right of way. But I suppose naturally speaking, you know, in any other situation, they would probably hoarded that off. So I think the fact that people have been using it to obviously run errands and things like that is obviously a benefit. But it's, it's private land at the end of the day, so it, you know, in any situation, it could easily be taken away at some point. So it's unfortunate, but it is, it is private land and it's up to, I suppose, the owner really, how he wants to proceed with that.
Yeah, but to my knowledge, it's been used for parking for the shops for at least 40 years.
It's true, but even as a commercial premises, you might have had stricter owners there who, you know, who want to use it for their particular tenancy, you know, or if it was a residential development. So that because it's private land, it just simply has, you know, it's been left, you know, to everyone's their own device, their own devices to use the land as and when they want to because it's been left open. And even the previous people who operated the commercial premises were obviously quite clearly relaxed about it. People came by and used their, you know, went to the coffee shop, whatever, and partly just to use that and not use their commercial premises. But, you know, there's no guarantee how it would be, you know, with other people. So it's, I don't think it's something that's... It's all up to individuals. The landowner's been quite relaxed about it for a number of reasons. But at the end of the day, private land, so people have been using it as and when they've, just because it's open. It could have been closed off at any time, really.
Thank you. Okay, councillor Leining.
And the second part was the difference between this and the previous application that was turned down.
We weren't involved with the previous application. So when you mean the previous application, is this the sixth unit scheme, which was submitted a few years ago? So we weren't involved with that. So we've taken a fresh look. I looked at the constraints. This is, even before this was submitted, there was a number of pre-apps we went through with the council. So it's been a long process working directly with, with the council. And there was a little bit of, I suppose, slightly different advice, which is why the original scheme was a bit different. And obviously that we were trying to work with the neighbours at the time. But that application that was refused, we weren't involved with that. We decided to take a fresh look and enough time had passed where, you know, we felt that was, that was fair. You know, there's obviously things have changed and there's a shortage of power drilling. And we've just been working, yeah, through pre-apps and working, you know, with a fresh start, really.
Yeah, I mean, I was only really concerned with the overlooking of Mount View Road and the other residents. So, thank you.
Thank you. Last, Chair, any more questions?
No further questions, Chair.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to the end of the public participation. Verity, did you want to update us on anything you've heard in the public participation?
Thank you, Chair, I've got nothing to update at this stage, thank you.
I wonder, it is before your time with us on the council, but I wonder if you can answer the question that councillor Leining and one of the objectors raised about the refusal of sixteen two and three bedroomed towerous dwellings. And normally we get given the reasons why these things were refused in the report.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So obviously every case is assessed on its own merits. I have looked through the history on the site and I think the issues with the previous application weren't only to do with the layout, there were serious concerns with the design of it fitting in the character of Oliver's Battery Road South. And obviously, policy has progressed and this time assessing it afresh. I consider that it does accord with the relevant policies of the development plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So we'll move on to questions from members to Verity. The first item I'm going to take is on page 41 and 42, and that's principle of development. Could I start here? In the update sheet, Verity, the first paragraph says this has to be added to the principle of development report. And where I'm confused, it's talking about negative land value and the losses that will be incurred should someone come forward and deliver any scheme and the abnormal costs of demolition and asbestos removal. And I couldn't quite understand why that would be more negative for one sort of proposal than for the current proposal. Because the demolition and asbestos removal would have to take place in any case, wouldn't it?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So I think what we're trying to get at with the submitted viability report and the update is that taking into account all the special circumstances of the application site, the fact that the existing buildings are in a poor state of repair, the site is not visible from the road, it's tucked behind an existing parade of shops and there is a lot of remedial works that need to be undertaken to allow a change of use. Costings have been provided in the viability report that show that the only other viable use would be residential. I'm not, I'm not a viability expert. However, I have looked at the report in detail and had a look through the different scenarios and it's very unlikely that it would be able to be used for a community use or another commercial use. And the only other option really in terms of viability and costings would be for it to be changed into use to residential.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have been any attempts to market the site for commercial uses?
Thank you, Chair. So the site hasn't been marketed and that's because the viability report makes it very clear that any other use wouldn't be acceptable on the site. Because as I've just stated previously, the existing buildings are in such a poor state of repair. It's got poor visibility and it's been vacant for, for many years. The applicant has also looked at whether they could do a community use or another commercial use. But there are other shops and community facilities in the area. And the costing show that it wouldn't be viable to develop, to develop the site in any other way. So in relation to this case, I don't think a marketing report would significantly change the findings or outcomes of that viability report. And it's not deemed necessary for this application.
I'm sorry to keep pursuing the same point. I wish to understand it, this is why I keep asking questions. But there is no evidence of any marketing report that the use of commercial premises here would be unviable. Is there? I understand that the current buildings that all have to come down, that's obvious because they're in a dreadful state of... But I can't quite understand, apart from the costs that you're telling me, why no marketing has been done as to a commercial use.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, you are correct. No marketing has been undertaken. However, taking into account in the viability report, the fact that the site has been vacant for many years, it's considered that a marketing report wouldn't outweigh, outweigh the consideration of the application for the reasons discussed within the viability report.
Okay, I'll let somebody else ask questions.
Councillor Clear has a question, Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Chair, but I think probably it's under the same lines as your question. So I was going to say, I would just like to be assured that, if possible, that the site has no reasonable prospect of being used for an alternative service or facility which would benefit the local community. I think it's more or less what you were asking, Chair, but that's, that's my question.
Thank you, Chair. So the applicant has provided a very detailed viability report which demonstrates that it's extremely unlikely that the site could be used for any other use, particularly for another commercial use or a community use. It's considered to be even more unlikely now, given the impact the coronavirus pandemic has had on the retail industry. So I don't think there would be a reasonable prospect of any other use coming forward, apart from a residential scheme. Thank you.
Thank you. So if there are no more questions...
Sorry, Chair, apologies. Carry on. We have a question on highways, that's, and councillor Afell has a question, but I don't know what area.
I was going to come on.
Councillor Afell, I'd like to carry on about the A1 site for highways.
Okay, so councillor Afell has a question on principle development, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. It's about marketing. If we don't market the place and nobody will know about it, they keep it quiet, then we can get building in there. I think we need to let this be marketed. It's an A1 site, needs to be marketed for two years and properly on a main road. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Does anyone want to answer that, either Verity or Julie?
Thank you, Chair. My assessment of this application is that a marketing report or a marketing campaign isn't necessary because of the state of the site at the moment. The existing buildings can't be marketed as they currently are because they are dilapidated and derelict. The case put forward in the viability report is very convincing. The site is tucked behind an existing parade of shops, it has poor visibility. And I don't think that a marketing report would result in any significant interest. Obviously, it's been vacant for some years. We haven't had any forthcoming planning applications, anything other than residential. So my professional judgment is that in this very particular instance, a marketing report isn't necessary. Thank you, Chair.
I didn't ask you if necessary, I said we should be doing it. Marketing, if you hide something away and don't tell anybody about it, only the people that live round there will know it, know about it. If, if you market it so that it's nationwide, somebody might come along with a new way of building glass houses or things like that, so it, so it works. They don't need to use the existing building at all.
Any answers from officers on that?
Chair, and I think if I could help, I mean, I, you know, I hear what councillor Afell says and I understand that point. I think what we've done as your officers is we've assessed it against policy CP6 and that talks about development proposals. It's got two bullet points on this. It says the site of premises is not required because the service or facility has been satisfactorily located and no longer needed to serve the locality. And this one, the subject of building has no reasonable prospect of being used for an alternative service or facility which would benefit the local community. And I think we've then considered that and made an assessment as your officers, based on the information we have... based on the information we have in this application. And that's the recommendation we've come to. Obviously, members can hear today the assessment and consider the application going forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Julie. If there are no more questions on the principle of development, I'll move on to design and layout and impact on the neighbouring amenities, page 43 and page 44. I would like to ask Verity about the plots one and two, when you showed us on site, and the windows, would it be the north end of that, you know, the flats that are on the end? There seem to be an awful lot of windows, and you do explain those on page 44, but I wonder if you could just take me through them again, to explain whether, because there seems to be some worry about overlooking from those windows.
Thank you Chair, I'm just going to get the relevant slides up from the presentation, just bear with me one second.
There we are, that was the one that concerned me, the one on the right. So the top floor, those are all in the roof, aren't they? So they wouldn't be overlooking from those. What about the bottom floor?
Thank you Chair, are you talking about the windows in plot one, which is on the ground floor? Yeah, let me just find that. So here is the floor plan for plot one. The ground floor windows, some of them serve bathrooms. And if we look on the photograph I've taken of the northern boundary. Sorry Chair, let me just find that. So this is the existing northern boundary, so there is quite a lot of screening along that boundary. The windows would introduce some overlooking to the neighbouring property to the north, however, because the overall height of plots one and plot two is not a full two-storey, and you have got quite substantial screening, I don't think that the impact in terms of overlooking on the neighbour to the north would be significant.
Thank you. And in whose ownership is that screening, landscaping screening?
I think it's, some is within the neighbouring property and there is some within the application site. I have put on a landscaping condition to make sure that we look at the boundary carefully if the application is approved, and we can obviously bolster this if necessary to improve the relationship between the application site and the northern neighbour. But as it currently stands, I don't think it would be significant, Chair, thank you.
I'm just quickly looking at the conditions, this will come under the next heading anyway, but have we got a condition to say that the landscaping should not be removed, the heading or whatever it is, there's a small tree there?
Thank you Chair, let me just find the condition.
We have a landscape condition asking what details the screening along the northern boundary, but I can't see any condition saying that that screening should remain.
Thank you Chair, I'm reading the wording with the condition at the moment, and you're right, there isn't anything in there which says that the trees and shrubs on the application side shall be retained, but it's something if members would like, I'm happy to put in as an amendment to that condition.
Would this be condition four?
Yes, it's condition number four, Chair.
Okay, well, we'll come to that later, thank you very much. Vice Chair, have you any questions on the impact of neighbouring amenities or design and layout?
No, Chair.
So we'll move on to questions on anything else, which will be landscape and trees, we've just been talking about highways and parking, nitrates and these matters. Councillor Rafael, did you want to ask about highways?
No, it was councillor Laming on highways, Chair, thank you.
Councillor Laming, did you want to ask about highways?
Yes please. I am very concerned with this application because the exit onto the Badger Farm, sorry, Oliver's Battery Road South is extremely dangerous with visibility lines, and I wonder how we can accept that. The second point is that with the current parking arrangements which have been reduced, there is already a great deal of problem with parking vehicles in the area due to the lack of public transport. And there is also a very bad junction with Oliver's Battery Road South onto Badger Farm Road, and it has dangerous exit onto it and entrance onto that road, which the locals have been fighting for a long time. So I am concerned with the extra traffic that's going to be generated from this. And if I can just go back to the viability, there was a very successful do it yourself supply on that site, which closed when the owner retired. So I'm not sure that the viability has been addressed in any shape or form. I'm sorry to sort of go back on to that, but those are very major points as far as I'm concerned on this application. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. We do have, it has been considered by the highways authority, but not the points, not all the points that you mentioned. Verity, anything to add?
Thank you Chair. So I have consulted Hampshire County Council Highways team, they have assessed the application, and they don't have any objection to the scheme in terms of any increase in highway safeties issues. The access to the site from Oliver's Battery Road South has been looked at, and that's considered to be acceptable to serve the development of seven dwellings. In terms of the parking, the site isn't allocated for any formal parking for the shops, so it's not really for the site to resolve the parking issues within Oliver's Battery Road South. There is on-street parking, and there is spaces outside of the shops. However, as Mr Murphy demonstrated within his presentation, it's private land and really there's not much that we can do. The owner could have enclosed that site many years ago to stop people parking there. So there's no formal parking allocation on there for the shops.
Verity, I'm sorry to sort of push this, but the other week we had an application where the site lines were being moved around to accommodate the safety. Now, the site lines, as you exit these shops, are nowhere near meeting Hampshire's normal standards, so I have a great deal of problem with actually accepting that particular statement. And also, when it comes to the parking, you have to realise that there is no allocation of visitors' parking spaces on this, to where the visitors go to park, because parking really is very bad in that area.
Thank you, thank you Chair. We've looked at the parking, the parking for the residential unit is in accordance with the residential car parking standards, SPD, and the application site is in a very sustainable location, it's within a defined settlement boundary. It's, I know, I know you've spoken about the bus, but it is close by to local shops and amenities, and it is close to Winchester Town Centre as well. So I don't think that the lack of visitor parking is a significant issue on the site, given how well connected it is to the local area and local amenities. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Any more questions, Vice Chair?
Yes, Chair, I have a question, and councillor Frank Pearson has a question as well, so if I could go first. Thank you. Given the fact that the bus service is inadequate, I'm concerned to see, first of all, that there is no provision for covered cycle parking for residents. So if they wanted to cycle into Winchester instead of catching the bus, where would they keep their bikes? And then, secondly, normally we would expect people to have, in due course, they're going to be moving into electric vehicles, but there doesn't seem to be any way that you can safely charge an electric vehicle from the houses, because the parking is away from these houses. So I wondered if that had been considered at all, please.
Thank you Chair. There is cycle storage within the site, I think it's to the rear of the properties. In terms of the charging points, there aren't any proposed in this application, but that's not to stop applications coming forward in the future to put in those electric charging points. But at the moment, the plans don't make any provisions for these. Thank you Chair.
Thank you.
Councillor Pearson?
Thank you Chair, thank you Sharon. It's been a long time waiting. My question is about the nitrates, again, inevitably so. We've got seven units going in here, and there's no comment in Verity's report about the ground standards as to what is here. So, and there's no comment from the water board about, unless I missed it, about links to the sewage system. So the nitrogen issue becomes very important. How is that going to be dealt with? I know we say Graham's conditions, but quite frankly, that is so sparse a comment, but it's hardly worth putting it there. Whereas all the other reports in this package, there's quite a lot of detail about the nitrates and things there. So really could we explain about the links with the sewage system? Has southern water been contacted, and what is the nitrate situation in relation to that?
Thank you Chair. I have assessed the nitrates in relation to this application, there is a section on it within my report, and there is a separate appropriate assessment which relates to the calculations on this site. The applicant has agreed to the Graham's condition, and that's an approach we're taking in Winchester to allow applications to be permitted, provided before they occupy the dwellings, they come back into us and provide a mitigation strategy or a financial contribution towards that. Drainage have also been consulted on the application, they had no objection. However, we have attached a condition, I'm just trying to find the number, which relates to a pre commencement condition, where they need to provide the details for foul and surface water. It's condition number nine, Chair.
Which is page 48.
Thanks very much Verity, that's very useful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did I just ask about bin storage, Verity? Is there a place for bin storage on the site?
Thank you Chair, I believe there is. I might just have a quick look back at the presentation to give you the exact location of that, if that's all right.
Concerning me is that the refuse collector will not drive in to that site, will it? It's supposed to be on the road curtilage.
Thank you Chair. So usually for developments of six or more dwellings, the bin lorry would enter the site to collect it. The tracking diagram does show that although it's tight, the bin lorry can enter and exit the site and collect the bins. I think the bin storage is at the front of the site, but it may be at the back. I don't have that detail to hand, but there is bin storage provision within the site.
While we're looking at them, Mark, could you point out the cycle storage?
I think that is at the back of the site. Which is these.
Are they individual sort of sheds?
Oh, I see, the little numbers, those are the...
Yes.
And the bin storages then?
I think the bin, I think the bin storage is at the back of the site as well, but it could be to the front. I don't have that level of detail to hand, Chair, unfortunately, but it is being provided within the site.
Is it that grey squares? Is it those grey squares?
I think it might be, but I can't be 100% sure on that.
Okay, thank you.
Are there stores for three bins? No, we all are going to have three bins surely, not two?
They're very small gardens councillor Pearson, they may well decide they don't want a garden refuse collection bin.
They've only got small gardens, haven't they? Right, so thank you. So Vice Chair, any more questions on the report?
No more questions indicated, Chair.
So we're on to debate.
We have two councillors wishing to debate, Chair, myself and councillor Pearson at the moment.
So councillor Russia, go ahead.
Thank you Chair. Actually, I'd like to welcome this application. It's seven affordable, sustainable units, small housing for which, and we all know as councillors how desperate we are for affordable housing in the Winchester district. These homes can provide, it's a very sustainable site, I know the bus services is totally inadequate, and that needs looking at, but people can cycle into Winchester quite easily from there, and there is covered and secure bike storage for each of the dwellings. So I'd like to commend Vivid on this application, that they look attractive, I think it's well designed. I think, given the limitations of the site, I think they've done as much as we could possibly ask in terms of landscaping and so on. So I'm happy to support the officer's recommendation in this case, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Pearson?
Thank you Sharon. Yes, I also like this development. It is a brownfield site, and we've got to face that fact, and it's had an experience of a series of, I'm sorry, was somebody interrupting that?
No, no one's interrupting you.
It's had an experience of failed commercial enterprise in the back there, because as the Ms Murphy's report says, it's out of sight, and so passing trade is not going to help if you put shops in there. It would have to be some sort of, I guess, factory units in there. I'm not quite sure how the local residents would greet those. However, that's speculation. It is a brownfield site, failed commercial, and therefore ripe for development. I'm rather, I'm happy with the designs because they're compatible with energy conservation. Having said that, I recognise very much disappointed there are no solar cells on the roof, which from viability point of view, sustainability point of view, there should be. Or are the applicants, are the future owners, if we're minded to grant this, going to be expected to put in an application to get solar units put on board, which seems to be a failed opportunity. If we're going to talk about charging points, and then again, that screams towards some fall of solar collection for that. And certainly, if we're talking about Bremen, at least Bremen Good or Bremen Excellence, which we should be, if environment is ahead of our policies, then one would expect solar cells to be on the roof. Nevertheless, I'm happy with this, I think it's a good design, I like the redesign of it, and they're linear, therefore they're parallel with the houses at the back and the front. The overlooking issue that one of the objections raised, I don't think is a viable argument in the sense that looking down to rather long gardens in an urban environment, across smaller gardens of their own. So unless the implication is that residents of these new units are going to sit there with binoculars to see what they can see, which is rather a facetious comment of mine, but I really, I don't think overlooking is an issue. And similarly, overlooking from ground floor windows, quite honestly, I really, I don't think that is a comment, because it'd be looking at an itch. Agent has quite rightly said, or the reporter said, Agents quite rightly said, or the reporters said, they're going to enhance the landscape, in particular the boundaries, in order to reduce that possibility. So yes, I'm very happy with this. I think it's a good, well designed. The buildings are well designed. Yes, different from previous. But like that, we're talking about 21st century designs rather than 20th century designs, which the rest of the houses in the area are. So yes, good, like it's. Let's vote for it.
Thank you, councillor Pearson. Vice Chairman, any more contributions to debate?
Yes, we have councillor Leaming and councillor Clear, Chair.
Leaming and councillor, oh, Clear, yeah. Councillor Leaming?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I am concerned with this greatly. There is no evidence of marketing. There was a very successful do it yourself business at the rear on this property, which ran for a number of years, as I said before. So it can be viable. And we haven't seen any evidence of marketing, which I'm really quite concerned about. They have not explored the community use. And there is little community use available on Oliver's Battery itself. The nearest community centre is Badger Farm, as I know full well. I really, really struggle with the the viewing of how you get out of the site onto the road because the hedges are extremely high and the visibility is extremely poor. And I think it's just an accident waiting to happen. And we already know that this has been some very near misses there. I'm also very concerned with the junction of the Oliver's Battery Road South and Badger Farm. And any increase in traffic on that is quite poor. With relative to the cycle routes, that also creates a problem for getting into Winchester because you have to go in the underpass, which is not really suitable for bikes. And I'm at a loss. What we see here is a lot of houses being put on a very small site. And I don't really see how I can support it. I'm sorry. It contravenes too many of it and of our policies.
Thank you, councillor Clear.
Thank you, Chair. Well, having visited the site, it is quite obvious to me that it has been vacant for several years. Buildings on site are, as we see, very dilapidated and extremely unsuitable for occupation. I know there was no marketing report, but I think if it's been vacant for several years now, I don't think any alternative service or facility would come forward that would benefit the local community. I like the plans. I like the way they look. So I agree with councillor Pearson. Bring it on. I support the application.
Is that it? Thank you, councillor Clear. Is that it, Vice Chair?
Yes, no more debate, Chair. Thank you.
And I too have visited the site. I am slightly surprised we don't have a marketing report. But if we look at the bottom of our update sheet, COVID-19 has changed everything to do with commercial premises, hasn't it? And so we have to take that into account. There has been a lot of concern about the loss of parking. Well, the parking is on private land and is only permissible by the owner. And he can withdraw that right at any time. So it isn't an allocated parking spot. Highways, well, the Highways Authority, they are statutory concerteries and they're not raising any objections. So it would be difficult to sustain an objection on those grounds. I do think personally that the landscaping at the bottom of, I don't know if it's one or two, but the ground floor flat at the end is important. And I would personally like to see condition four strengthened, that whatever is agreed should remain there in perpetuity. Having listened to councillor Pearson, he might not agree with me. But I'm seeking the committee's approval to strengthen condition four, that, and I'll leave it to officers to word it, but whatever is agreed should remain there or be replaced should it die. If this is a fairly easy report, could you just unmute your microphones and say agree? Or do we have objections to strengthening condition four of the site? Haven't heard anything from the committee?
Agreed.
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 To be agreed. And we'll leave it up to officers for the wording of it. So this application has been recommended for approval with the strengthening of condition four in that there should be landscaping, the agreed landscaping should be there in perpetuity. And I'll leave it up to Dave Shaw to do the roll call of members who will give their vote.
Chairman, before you do your vote, we can't require the landscaping to be retained in perpetuity. That would be an unreasonable condition. What I could suggest you is at number four, on the third dashed bullet point, Verity's condition says details of screening along the northern boundary. And I think we could add there including retention of the existing landscape features within the site. And then the second rider in that condition says that those works should be carried out prior to the completion of the development. And then there's the five year implementation period. So if they die or something is removed, they're replaced. And I think it would be unreasonable of us as a committee to go beyond that, I'm afraid. And I know why you'd like to do that, but I just need to say we can't do it in perpetuity. But we can require as part of the landscape plan them to show us which features can be retained, which should be enhanced as we get a strong landscape frame along that edge, Chair.
Yep, noted. And that is our normal position, isn't it? Okay.
Thanks. Thank you.
Pass it over to Dave Shaw to give a roll call of members.
Yes, thank you again. Councillor Clear?
Four.
Thank you, councillor Evans?
Four.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
Four.
Councillor Leaming?
Against.
Councillor Rafel?
Against.
Councillor Ritter?
Four.
And councillor Pearson?
Four.
So that's four members, four, two against.
Five members, four.
No, I think you'll find it's five members, four.
Yes, thank you for that clarification. Again, five, four and two against. And councillor McLean didn't take part in that vote.
That's correct, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that application has been approved. And we are now going to take a short break until 12 o'clock, okay? And we have two more applications to get to before lunch.
Chair, in taking your break, can I let the members of the public into the meeting for the next items? Yes, okay, thank you.
We will reconvene at 12 o'clock. Yes?
I will do it now, ladies. Councillor Clear?
Yes, I'm present. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Evans, yes. Councillor Gordon Smith?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Councillor Leaming?
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor McLean?
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Rafel?
Present.
Councillor Ritter?
Present.
And councillor Pearson?
Present.
Thank you. Yes, so all members are present again. Thank you.
Thank you. So we are now discussing item nine, agenda item nine, which is 112 Teg Down Meads, Winchester, 20/01390/FUL. The case officer is Liz Marsden. Good morning, Liz. And when you're ready, Liz, we're ready to listen to the presentation. We're just getting the presentation up on screen.
Chair, can you see the presentation now?
Can see the presentation. I haven't heard any...
Okay. Okay, we'll start now. Okay, morning. The proposal is for the erection of a pair of semi-detached dwellings in the garden, the rear garden of number 112 Teg Down Meads. How do you, there we go, sorry. The, this is just to show the general layout of properties within the vicinity of the area. As you can see, along... Can we get rid of that? David? Sorry. As we can see, there are fairly spacious gardens along this area and on the corner plots where this is potential for additional units. This is an aerial view, just to give you some sort of idea of the character of the area. The houses along the roads are fairly closely related to each other, but as they have got spacious rear gardens. In this case, the proposal is to reduce the length of the house, the existing house, which is actually one of the smaller properties in the area, and create two new dwellings in the garden. The site is sloping, which means this is the ground floor layout. You can have car parking in accordance with standards to the frontage of both properties. It will be set slightly to the front of number two hillside, but in line with the existing dwelling at 112 Teg Down Meads. In the roof space, it's proposed to have two bedrooms. It's basically a single story, but as you will see, a single story but with accommodation in the roof space. So it's a fully pitched roof from eaves level at ground floor level. An extension to the rear with another room. The rear elevation, this would be facing 114 Teg Down Meads. As I was saying, the site itself slopes from both south to north and from west to east. So what they are proposing to do is excavate down. You can see the red line there which shows the existing land level. So they would be going down quite considerably at this end and less so as it meets number two Hillside Road. And again, there you can see the extent of the excavation that is proposed in order to reduce as far as possible the overall height of the buildings. And that is an illustrative street scene. This is number 112 Teg Down Meads and this is number two Hillside. And the proposal sits between those, retaining a gap between the existing properties on either side. So the photograph is what the site looks like at the present time. That's number two Hillside. And that's looking angling up to 112 Teg Down Meads with 114 beyond it. It's number two Hillside. And this is looking across to the other side of the road. There is a bus stop there. And houses which are set again at a lower land level than the road. You can see here how the land carries on going down the further east you go. In terms of views of the site, you can see here, it's not so obvious the reduction in height towards from south to north, but it's quite steep showing down from the west to the east there. Currently is laid to grass with a few some fruit trees. Looking back at the house, as I said, this is one of the small houses along there. It has windows at ground floor level, but only a single bathroom window at first floor level, which would look out over the site. And it's looking up to neighbouring property at 114, which has, I think it's a converted garage building along the elevation. Longer views, this was looking up Hillside Road towards the site. You can see number 112 there. This is number two Hillside. So the dwellings would be located in this area. Generally looking down, see the land level dropping away across the development over the whole of Teg Down Meads. And an even longer view looking up Hillside Road, you can see the existing property there on the site. And much... And from the junction of Teg Down Meads and Hillside Road, you could see the site in there and that's where the properties would be. The application is recommended for approval. It's considered to be an effective use of land and can be, could be accommodated without undue detriment to the character and appearance of the area. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Liz. So we'll move on to the public speaking. We have Joanne McLeod, who's speaking as an objector. Adam Henry, on behalf of Mr and Mrs Brown and Miss Janine Wright. So, public speakers, good morning. Good morning, Mr McLeod and Mr Henry. We have three minutes in total allocated. And we may share that three minutes however you like. But just be aware that at the end of three minutes, I will have to ask you to finish your presentation to us. And who is going first? Mr McLeod, are you going first or?
Hi there.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to clarify, sorry, it's myself, Joanne McLeod of Adams Henry Consulting, and I'm speaking on behalf of Mr and Mrs Brown. And then, yeah, sorry about that. And then following me is another local resident called Janine Wright.
Oh, okay. That's my mistake then. I see there's a comma in between. So yeah, I've misread it. So...
Yeah. Is Janine, is Janine here?
I'm Miss Janine Wright. Are you here?
Hello, Chair. Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
So you have three minutes between you. And have you decided who's speaking first?
Yes, I'm going first, if that's okay. Thank you, Chair.
A clock will come up in the screen in a minute. And when you're ready, please start.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning. So my clients live at 2 Hillside Road immediately to the north of the site, which as your office notes, will suffer the most significant impact. Their objections relate to the overdevelopment of the site resulting in poor quality design and an unacceptable impact on the character of the local area and on residential amenity. The local area is spacious and green. The proposal for a pair of semi-detached bungalows on a small plot is out of character with the area. The properties are positioned forward of the alignment of houses along Hillside Road. And this results in a narrow frontage dominated by hard landscaping and parking. The layout doesn't allow for cars to turn on site, creating a safety hazard as there's a bus stop opposite. The scheme, if the scheme is approved, it could set a harmful precedent which could result in additional inappropriate development, further eroding the character of the area. The proposals will also have a detrimental impact on my client's residential amenity. The prominent forward position of 2, relative to 2 Hillside Road, will cause an overbearing impact. As the dwellings lie to the south of 2 Hillside Road, my clients are likely to experience loss of light. Whilst there is a 5.8 metre gap between 2 Hillside Road and plot two, the distance to my client's garden is actually about half this length. And the courtyard is so close, it's likely to exacerbate noise from the garden. The design layer also limit the privacy of future occupants of plot two with views from my client's property into a bedroom. And it's noted that permitted development rights are to be removed. So the overdevelopment of the site is resulting in a scheme that does not respect the local area. And the aim of maximising development is at the expense of good quality and sustainable design and its contrary to policy. So for the reason set out, it should be refused. And I know, hand over to Janine.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The proposed development is considered to be out of keeping with the character and appearance of the street scene and wider spatial area. It's considered to be a cramped form of development with the built form occupying a large proportion of each plot. It's considered to be a cramped form of development with the built form occupying a large proportion of each plot. Furthermore, the residential amenity shown as a small courtyard and this area would be further reduced in size by the addition of other residential paraphernalia such as washing lines, garden sheds and outdoor seating areas. Adequately landscaping provisions have been admitted due to the plot size and this could have an impact on the health and wellbeing of future occupants. The proposal would set a precedent for similar developments within the area and overall is considered it would not achieve the objectives set out within the National Planning Policy Framework, specifically paragraph 127, which seeks to achieve well-designed places. The proposal should therefore be refused. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. It could be that members of the committee will have questions for you. So I'll just check with the Vice Chair as to whether anyone has indicated they would like to ask you a question.
No questions indicated at present, Chair.
Could I just ask you, Miss Wright, are you a resident of the area?
Yes Chair, I'm a resident of the area.
Not a direct neighbour?
No, no, I'm further down Hillside Avenue.
Yeah, so just trying to put the context to your, your speech.
We have councillor Pearson with a question, Chair.
Councillor Pearson.
Thank you Chairman. Looking at the question of precedent, which both of our speakers mentioned, perhaps they could comment on the next road to the east. It looks as something similar has happened where a house has gone into the back garden of the existing house. Are you aware of that when you comment about this would set a precedent?
I'm happy to answer that, Joanna, yes, I am aware of that. On that particular site, the property at the rear is a bungalow, which is more in keeping with the the street scene. There is a number of bungalows down that Goring Field Road. If you, if you look at the proposal at the moment, it also shows that there's front dormers, which is not in keeping with any of the properties along Hillside Road or Tegdown Meads. And again, the site is for two proposed properties, which would be a cramped form of development.
So it's not precedent, you're arguing, it is out of character, is that what you're saying?
It's, it's out of character, but the precedent would be for the two properties. I, I would accept that one property, well designed in that location would be acceptable. But two properties, it is just a cramped form of development and would create the precedent for other corner plots further along Tegdown Meads on other corners.
Okay, thank you very much. It was a challenge, wasn't it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Yes Chair, we have councillor Laming with a question, thank you.
Now I withdraw that Frank covered that for me.
So that being all the questions, we'll move on then to one of the Ward councillors, councillor Anne Weir. Good morning councillor Weir.
Good morning Chair.
And when you're ready, you have five minutes.
Thank you Madam Chair for the opportunity to speak today. There are two principal reasons I'm supporting over 30 local residents in objecting to this application. First, I don't believe that planning policy criteria have been sufficiently or adequately addressed in making the recommendation in the report before you. And second, the context of this development has important ramifications for the character of the whole Tegdown area. This is a matter for policymaking which should be set through public deliberation and consultation in the local plan process and not through the outcome of one planning application on a sensitive site. Previous speakers have made many of these points for me and Janine Wright's written submission states the case for refusal very articulately. On the planning criteria, the proposal is of questionable design quality, responding poorly to the neighbouring buildings and local context, resulting, I believe, in a striking loss of green space, lacking distinctive character and reducing the quality of the natural environment. The increased density of two additional dwellings with minimal courtyard external space and no front gardens goes beyond what is called for by effective use of land. The balance has been tipped too far towards urbanisation, failing to respect the suburban countryside feel of the whole area. This would result in a marked loss to green infrastructure and the cumulative effect on biodiversity is inadequately accounted for. Developments such as this create serious barriers to wildlife corridors. Our council's biodiversity strategy requires us to challenge such proposals and properly evaluate and assess the impacts on our natural environment. The parking provision is of real concern. Without any dimensions or benchmarks, it's impossible to assess whether more than the smallest of cars will park in spaces without overhanging the footpath close to a road junction and opposite a bus stop. It seems all but inevitable that larger vehicles will start to be parked unsafely on the road. These are not family-friendly homes. They have very limited amenity and recreational space and the constrained interiors suggest there will be pressure to use this small outdoor space for storage. Overlooking a noise are reasonable concerns for existing neighbours. All factors that will have adverse impacts on the wellbeing of new occupants as well as existing residents. Given the sensitivity of this site, by my calculation, there are at least eight more corner plots on the estate that are potential candidates for development. It surprises me that no opinion was sought from the urban design panel on the wider impact of this scheme. In the absence of that advice, we must turn to the comment from the City of Winchester Trust, who have objected on the grounds that it represents a departure from the extensive character of the area, namely two full-stout storey houses beneath pitched roofs in generous garden settings. They also say the proposal for two times three bed dwellings overcrowds the site and provides little amenity. It recognises neighbourhood objections regarding the location opposite the bus stop and proximity to a road junction. In summary, Madam Chairman, the pre-principle of development on these gateway sites around Tegdown has been established at Goring Field, as mentioned before, and Sermon and Grovelands Roads. These are three corner developments where one additional two to three bed dwelling has been successfully added with generous off-road parking and family-friendly gardens. This is the principle that should be followed on this corner site too, on which this application fails singularly to do. Please refuse this application, thank you.
Thank you councillor Weir. So just to clarify. Out of the number of corner plots that you've cited, some of which have been built on, there are no plots that have two dwellings on them.
Indeed, indeed, that's the case. And there is a plot on the corner of Bradley Road and Hillside, which was recently refused permission to add a further building in there. The original building, if I'm correct, had already been extended and I believe split and they didn't allow a further property to go in.
Right, thank you. There could be more questions for you, Vice Chair. Any more questions?
No more questions indicated Chair.
No, so that's it, thank you very much councillor Weir for coming along. If you could mute your microphone and turn your camera off. Liz, anything you wish, oh no, no, we have one more speaker, the supporter agent Jeremy Tyrrell. Good morning, Mr Tyrrell. Good morning.
Thank you Chair, good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, answer you and when you're ready, you have three minutes.
Good, thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Jeremy Tyrrell, the agent for this application. We've worked patiently and collaboratively with Miss Marsden since the original pre-application submission last December. We feel in this case, the pre-application process, which we are encouraged to use, has worked extremely well. Following several meetings and design iterations, we have arrived at a scheme which resulted positive concluding letter from this meeting. The key points of the pre-application advice received are that Policy CP2 of Local Plan Part One considers housing mix and requires that there should be a majority of three-bedroom dwellings, unless local circumstances indicate an alternative approach should be taken. The proposal here is for two three-bed dwellings, which would accord with this policy. Policy CP14 Local Plan Part One states that the development potential of all sites should be maximised and that higher densities will be supported on sites which have good access to facilities and public transport, which this site does, it has a bus stop right outside. However, the primary determinant will be how well the design responds to the general character of the area, which the pre-application letter goes on to discuss. Under the heading of impact on the surrounding area, the pre-application letter goes on to say, the development does retain spaces between existing and proposed properties, which reflect the general spatial characteristics of the area and overall, it is considered that the dwellings could be accommodated in this location without undue harm to the character and appearance of the area. I'll repeat that key sentence. Overall, it is considered that dwellings should be accommodated in this location without undue harm to the character and appearance of the area. This has been one of the most positive conclusions to a pre-application that I have experienced in nearly 20 years working in Winchester and it gave us and our client the comfort and confidence to bring the proposal forward as a full planning application. If you choose to vote against your officer's recommendation to approve this application, I suggest this would seriously bring into question the purpose of your pre-application process and its advice. I'd like to make two final points. The proposals put forward for this site are very much in line with a similar but smaller corner site scheme that we designed at 81 Alstford Road, which you approved in 2018 and has been built and the units are now occupied. That application also involved the enlargement of the original dwelling, which this application does not propose. At Tegdown Meads, the applicant has made amendments to the position of the houses between submission and validation of the application, following direct consultation with the neighbours at number two Hillside Road, resulting in the proposed dwellings being moved further away from number two Hillside Road.
Chair has three minutes.
Thank you for listening and you will follow your officer's recommendation to approve this application.
Thank you very much, thank you Mr Tyrrell. Any questions for Mr Tyrrell, Vice Chair?
No questions currently indicated Chair.
No, so thank you very much, Mr Tyrrell, for coming along today. If you could just mute your microphone and turn your camera off, that would be great. And obviously being with the outcome of the consideration. So Liz, anything you wish to add from what you've heard in the public speaking?
And not really Chair, I mean, I do have, I did measure the parking spaces to ensure that they accorded with our standard sizes, which they do, they're a minimum of 4.9 metres long and 2.5 metres wide. So from that, I can answer any questions about anything else, but I just wanted to say that the parking is acceptable.
Thank you.
And scalable off the plans.
Thank you. And councillor Weir brought up the question of the urban design panel, who haven't been consulted. Did you want to make a comment on that?
We don't take everything to urban design, I didn't, in this particular instance. I didn't think it was, well, we could have done, but we didn't, apologies.
Right, thank you. And just to verify that, this is at committee because we've had 29 households objecting. One household wrote a letter of support and presumably in addition to the 29 households, there's the City of Winchester Trust, just to, Mr Tyrrell was querying the pre-op process, but that's why we're today on our agenda.
That's correct Chair.
Yeah, yeah. So, members from the committee, I'm going to take the first two headings. The principle of design and principle of development and design and layout, which is on page 70 and a bit of 71. Could I start the questions off while people are putting their indications on chat? We've heard a lot about precedent from the objectors and I know I queried that in our pre-meeting and I said I would ask officers about precedent, setting precedent here. We've heard from councillor Weir and from the other objectors that there are many more corner plots still to be built on and the criticism is that this will set a precedent. Liz, would you like to answer that or?
Yes, thank you Chair, there, there are other plots in the vicinity, particularly on the corner of Tegdown Meads with the roads that run, run off it. As, as we're aware, the two that are on the corner of, with Goring Fields, both sides there have been developed with a single dwelling. In both cases, there, I've done a comparison of the actual plot widths as well, not the lengths necessarily, because they're a bit more obvious and the Goring Field ones were both narrower than this current proposal. There's a site on the other side, on the other side of Hillside Road from this, which is a similar size to this current proposal. And then there are, on the junction of the next road to the west, which I haven't written down, city, but 122 and 124, there, there is potential, they are similar sized plots there, but they haven't been developed. Further west, on the junction of Grovelands Road, the, it's potential, but there's the depth of the plot as opposed to the width is reduced, but they're still sizable plots. So there are a few others, I would say.
Thank you.
In the vicinity.
Yeah. Um, thank you. Vice Chair?
Yes, we have councillor Pearson and I have a question as well Chair, thank you.
Do you want to start councillor Rutter?
Councillor Pearson was before me Chair, so.
I'm sorry Chair, I wasn't aware there's a race on here, but I would have been quite happy. Anyway, the question of design and property landscaping coming into this. I noticed Liz, that this site is well cut into the bank. Any comments about retaining walls and slope stability and indeed drainage that would be a result of that? How is that going to be handled? Because presumably the drainage will go down into the roadside or is that going to go add to the foul water drains in some way? Question, the second one is again about design. Concerned about the restricted site. Can you give us a quick speculations, the size of the bedrooms? What are the internal dimensions of the bedrooms in these, on these two buildings?
I'm afraid I didn't actually measure the internal dimensions. Some indication is given by the fact that the floor plans do show double beds within, within the, sorry, I'll have to look at my, within the rooms, so the double beds are the appropriate size, then it is possible to get some indication of the room sizes there. In fact, they're all fully furnished, the floor layout, so that should give, provide some indication.
Well, if it's Prescott furniture, that doesn't really give us very much. On the other hand, if it's DFL, then that's a different dimension. Shall we say the three-bedroom houses, are they 93 square metres?
I, I'm afraid I didn't go into that. The actual floor sizes, I can, I can certainly find out for you. Let me see if there's.
Overdevelopment would be useful to know that.
Would you be happy if Liz came back with that?
Yes surely, what about the drainage and retaining walls?
Yes, well, I did go back and, because that was an issue that was raised during the application, so I have been back to the agents on that and additional information has been provided because one of the questions was the retaining walls will reduce. has been provided, because one of the questions was the retaining walls will reduce further the overall scale of the amenity area available, and they did provide information to suggest that it was actually quite minimal, even with the large, the taller walls, which will be at the south-west corner. I think it's about twenty centimetres or something, so that was considered to be acceptable. They obviously will have to be fit for purpose in order to, you know, achieve both what's on-site and what is adjacent, and to protect the adjacent properties. The one, both a hundred and fourteen and a hundred and twelve would be most affected there. In terms of drainage, they have provided drainage details which are available on the website online, showing where the soakaways are going, and these have been forwarded to, checked with our drainage officers.
And they're all happy. Have you commented about the slope stability with these retaining walls, if they're very light, as your comment?
I'm not saying that they will be calculated to be fit for purpose. They have been calculated to be fit for purpose, and they provided the dimensions that were required in order to cope with that, and it didn't significantly reduce the area available. That's the details that I had, which again.
Okay, well, thanks very much for that. Can you look up about the dimension of these houses? I mean, the OREBA suggests that a dimension of a three-bed house should be ninety-three square metres. How close to that is it?
Okay.
Sorry, we have got this here. So the plot, the house sizes, the ground floors are sixty and a point five square metres, and first floor is thirty-six point five, thirty-six square metres.
Ninety-six square metres, no?
Yeah, ninety-six point five, we're being.
Thank you. So any more questions on principle, development, design and layout?
I have a question, Chair, thank you.
Of course you do, yes.
Thank you. The applicant made great play of the fact that they had been through considerable amount of pre-application advice with our officers. I wanted to ask what relative weight we should give to that information, as against the weight that we should be giving to the City of Winchester Trust, who very clearly object to this scheme. They say it represents a departure from the character of the area, they say it's overcrowding, provides little amenity space, and they also support the neighbourhood objections to the location and so on. So could you just tell me what relative weight we should be giving to these two different and opposing facts? Thank you.
We do, as case officers, provide application advice on a regular basis. We make the judgment to the best of our ability on-site, but as you say, it's a democratic process, and we have, whether City of Winchester Trust are not consulted during any pre-application process, they obviously do comment on everything within Winchester, and everyone else is entitled to comment as well. Our letters are caveated that it is the officer advice, but, you know, it's not set in stone, and that is why you have to put in a formal application to enable everyone else to, you know, put forward their views.
Okay, it doesn't really help, but yeah, I know, I see what.
To that, because the City of Winchester Trust, as far as I'm aware, aren't consulted at the pre-up stage by, well, certainly not by us, and possibly not by the, so it's very difficult to afford weight.
At a pre-up stage, your officers are giving technical advice based on our assessment and interpretation of your policies and the local plan. It's not public engagement at that stage, it's your office's professional judgement, and we give that to the best of our ability. When we have an application in front of us, as we do now, yes, of course, the advice we give is your officer's material. Our recommendation demonstrates that we think the principle is acceptable, and we've outlined that. What you have to do as decision-makers is weigh up all the relevant material planning considerations. You've heard our recommendation, you've heard from local residents, the City of Winchester Trust, ward members, consultees, statutory and non-statutory, and then what you'll do in the decision is weigh those all up and reach what you, weigh up what you think of the material planning considerations, and then make your decision based on that, having regard to the development plan and those other material factors. So I don't think we can say one carries more weight than the other. That's the job of the decision-maker in your own mind to come to that conclusion as you make your decision. Hopefully that helps, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your clarification. So I'm going to move on unless the vice chair tells me there are more people wanting to ask questions.
No more questions on the principle of design.
So just move on to the two impacts, impact on the character of the area and impact on neighbouring property. Could I ask, Liz, about the overlooking or the proximity to the courtyard of number two Hillside Road from the lower property as you go along Hillside Road? That has been mentioned multiple times today, that it's so near the courtyard that there could be overlooking, and there could be disturbance of noise.
Yes, Chair, the relationship is one garden to the side of a house. This is fairly common within settlements, and, you know, it's, I don't consider that that, the potential for noise and disturbance from that garden is such that it would present a huge impact on the amenities of the neighbouring property. It's a side elevation, but gardens are regularly located next to side elevations, and I don't think that that's something that we could justify refusal on amenity grounds. The proposal will not result in the overlooking from these, from the new dwellings to the adjacent properties. As I've mentioned in my report, there is an existing window in the side elevation of number two Hillside Road, which currently looks down into the garden, albeit the end of this long garden of number, you know, a hundred and twelve Tegdown. This will look into the garden of plot, of the plot closest to it, and potentially have impact on their amenity, where is, you know, where anyone is proposing to look at purchasing that property or whatever, they will be aware of it, it is an existing situation. So again, that I find has less weight than if this proposal was to directly overlook the private amenity areas of any of the existing dwellings.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair, any more questions on the two impacts?
No questions on impacts, Chair.
So any questions on the rest of the heading, highways and parking, ecology, other matters, the conclusion or the conditions?
We have councillor Clear with a question on highways and parking.
Councillor Clear?
Thank you, Chair. Obviously, I've read the highways and parking update on this, but I do have concerns, access opposite a bus stop, and I have concerns about highway safety. I just wondered if, Liz, I'm sorry to put this to you, because we don't ever have highways people here, but I am concerned on that. Do you have anything further to say on that? I just wondered, thank you.
Not directly. I did consult the county highways officers who we, and pointed out that there was a bus stop opposite. They didn't consider that this would be an issue in terms of highway safety, and that's the advice we've got. I mean, it was mentioned earlier that it's not possible to turn on-site, and therefore cars would reverse out into the road or reverse into their site. I mean, that is the same situation as most, the majority of the houses along Hillside Road. I don't know where the next bus stop is, so whether there is a similar relationship down there, but I did ask the question specifically, and the highways officers were not concerned that this would increase highways hazard to users of the highway.
Thank you.
Vice Chair, any more questions?
No more questions, Chair.
So debate? I'm going to start then, as nobody has indicated. I'm not going to support this application, I'm afraid. I think it's too cramped. I think two properties are to make it the site look cramped, there's very little amenity space. I think the proximity, despite what the case officer says, sorry, Liz, that the proximity to the courtyard of number two Hillside is important, it is too close. I do think that there's a precedent here, and when I visited the site, I saw many corner plots which could be built upon, and I think although the residents obviously had no objection to building on these plots, I think they have every objection to two on the plot, and there's no other, so far, no other corner plot. These houses are also out of alignment, very difficult. They're in alignment with the Tegdown Meads, but they're not in alignment with the Hillside Road, so I think that will look odd. It's got dormers and a flat roof, I'm not very keen on those. I don't think that will fit in with the area. I do think the parking is tight, but I accept that that's the way things are. The City of Winchester Trust has put in a very strong objection, but I just personally feel it will harm the character of the area. I hear what Mr. Chair said about his pre-up process, and that's what officers believed at the time, but if we look at the number of objections and the City of Winchester Trust's objections, obviously, neighbour, the neighbourhood doesn't want this type of design. Now, Tegdown Meads is a development of its time, and I think we shouldn't be approving a development such as this, which is totally out of keeping. The previous committee, we were just down the road, on a different road, modern houses looked very nice, so, you know, there are spaces for modern developments, but I don't think this is one. And also, I think the amenity space for people buying these houses is too small, but I know that would be on the owners of people desiring to buy it. So those are my reasons for not supporting the application. Vice Chair, any more?
Yes, Chair, they're queuing up. We have councillor Pearson, we have myself, we have councillor Gordon Smith, councillor Clear, councillor McLean and councillor Laming. So I think that's a whole, full house. Thank you.
Oh no, we haven't got councillor Fell.
Oh no, we haven't got councillor Fell yet.
I don't feel like.
Thank you.
So councillor Pearson, I think I heard your name first.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, this is an interesting planning application, and I was listening to what everyone was saying, and no doubt will listen to what the rest of the debate is, but to me, there are three issues that have been raised constantly. First one is overlooking. Difficult to say that this house overlooks any other house, because it's sunk into the ground, but the existing house would overlook it. Noise, a difficult argument to sustain in a suburban area, without suggesting that every garden in the area has regular outside parties and disturbs each other. So I'm not quite sure how you could sustain that argument. The second one, overdevelopment, and I must admit, my first reaction of this comes as two three-bed houses, semi-detached, oh, sorry, one three-bed semi-detached units in this looks a tad overdevelopment. But when I asked Ms. Marston about the area of each of these units, and it is ninety-six point five square metres, and OREBA recommends that a three-bed house should be a minimum of ninety-three square metres, that overdevelopment argument about the size of the house becomes very, very difficult to sustain. Regarding the parking, again, the same situation is, I was a bit nervous to the proximity of the footways there, but if these car parking bays are standard length and width, again, be very difficult to sustain one, that one. And as far as the bus stop opposite, yeah, that is an issue, it could be. I don't know how regular the bus service is down that road, but you're suggesting that there are no bus stops opposite houses anywhere in the area. Well, I don't know the area well enough to say that that is the case, so I'm not quite sure whether you could sustain that argument as well. The only thing is, the design is radical as far as the area is concerned. Does one go along that and say it is out of character to the rest of the houses? Well, we have actually accepted houses throughout a curate, I can see a classic one up at the top end of Andover Road, which is the top of Stanmore, where there's a very late twentieth century design in the middle of those nineteen-sixty council houses, and it stands out quite a lot, and that we've accepted that in the past. But each site has got to be judged on its own merits, we're told that often enough. So I find it very, very difficult to think of what policies you could hang a hat on and not to turn this down. Certainly overlooking doesn't work, overdevelopment doesn't work, parking doesn't work, design, well, it's radical, but are we going to start turning down houses because they've got radical designs? I don't know. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Rutter?
Thank you, Chair. I'm finding this a very difficult application to decide, as probably has been clear from my questions. I think it's very much a six of one and a half a dozen of the other. I very much appreciate the concerns of local residents. However, this, we do have a responsibility, first of all, to listen to our officers and take their professional advice about these things, but we also have a responsibility to maximise the amount of housing that we're able to put onto these brownfield sites, back garden developments as well, so long as it's reasonable, they're a reasonable size, access is okay and so on. I am minded to support the officer's recommendation, because I looked at these houses. I think, given the current situation, that more and more people are working from home, I think these houses provide that sort of opportunity, perhaps for small professional couples, whatever, so, you know, you wouldn't get, I mean, they're not really the sort of house that you would buy with a young family, that the amenity space is tiny, but if you're a retired couple wanting to find a sustainable suburban place to retire to, these would be ideal. So, and it's a sustainable site, it's next to a bus stop, I don't, we didn't hear about anything to do with sold photo voltaic cells or anything, I'm hoping they're going to be built to high, to high environmental standards and so on. I'm concerned about the biodiversity aspect, which councillor Weir mentioned, and that doesn't seem to have been taken into account, so that's something that is concerning me. But on balance, I think I'm going to have to agree with councillor Pearson that there are few planning reasons that we could uphold in, against a planning inspector that would bear enough weight to turn this down, so I'm afraid I'm going to have to support the officer's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Gordon Smith?
Yes, I have to say, I take the opposite view. I think Tegdown Mead has a very strong urban suburban form of its own, and it seems to me that this building is quite contrary to that. I think there is a problem of it setting a precedent, and I think that, yeah, that there always is a problem on these corner sites when the plotlines change, but if you look at the whole of Tegdown, you see that by and large, the plotlines for the houses are respected, and here we have a complete break with that. And I think in terms of overdevelopment. And I think in terms of overdevelopment, okay, the building itself may meet RIBA standards. But relative, the footprint of the building relative to the plot is pretty high, and I would count that as overdevelopment. So it seems to me there are two reasons. One is the impact on the area, the visual impact on a strong and fairly coherent urban form. And then the problem with overdevelopment. And I think also that, you know, we encourage people to develop the neighbourhood design statements and similar documents. And then to find something that accepts, something that flies in the face of that. Rather, you know, people think, well, collectively, people who've worked on these things, why are we bothering? So I'm afraid I'm against it.
Thank you. Councillor Clea.
Thank you, Chair. I have visited the site. I do feel that there is overcrowding on site and provides little amenity, perhaps one a building, but two, no, I'm afraid. I continue to query the impact that housing, on the housing having the access opposite a bus stop. And I think it would have highway safety concerns. And I have read, I know the Highway and Parking Report, but I've also read Policy DM18. And I'm not sure if it, I think it is against Policy DM18 in several places. There are other corner plots that could accommodate housing, so I feel this could set a precedent. So I'm sorry, but I do not feel that this application will make a positive contribution to the area. So I am against this application.
Thank you. Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Chair. My buttons taking a long time to press. As has already been mentioned, and we've seen from Liz and we've heard from Mr. Terrell, there was a huge amount of pre-application advice went in this with our officers. Obviously, our policies are being looked at by the applicant and again, through advice from our officer. And that advice obviously has been followed. The City of Winchester Trust has given an opinion, but it's not a statutory body. I'm sure that advice was also taken into account at that time. We are, I'm regularly getting my knuckles wrapped because I quite occasionally go against the officers. But we are regularly being told that we should follow the advice of our officers because they've looked at our policies. In this case, the threat of an appeal would probably hang over the council. And if we have suggested a way forward which we as a committee then turned down, I think we'd have to fight hard to win that appeal. So I will be voting with the officers for the reasons I've just outlined.
Thank you. Councillor Laming.
Thank you, Chair. It's quite a hard decision, this, because of the pre-application advice. However, I do feel that this totally changes the character of the street and the area. And I think I listened to the objectors, and there is possibly a case for a single dwelling. But two, makes it complete overdevelopment of that area. And with that and changing the character of the area, I cannot see how I'm going to support this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Rutter, is that it?
No, we have a full house. We have councillor Ruffel now, Chair, thank you.
I didn't want to put pressure on you.
Thank you, Chair. I think most people have said things I want to say. I think this is a lovely development, ideal for a working couple, so I should be supporting it.
Okay, thank you. So this application has been recommended for approval, subject to the conditions on page 73, 74, 75 and informative 75, 76. Dave, I'll leave you to call the roll call of my decision.
Yes, thank you again. Councillor Clea.
Against.
Councillor Evans.
Against.
Councillor Gordon Smith.
Against.
Councillor Laming.
Against.
Councillor McLean.
For.
Councillor Ruffel.
For.
Councillor Rutter.
For.
And councillor Pearson.
Four.
So that's four, four, Chair.
And so I have the right to a casting vote, and I shall stick with my decision to vote against this application and to refuse this application. So we have two reasons for refusal and vote upon those. Officers, you've been listening to those who wanted to refuse, off and three other councillors. Any contributions to those reasons?
Thank you, Chairman. I've heard what members that voted against have said, and having looked at our policies and having heard that, I wonder if your reason for refusal might be something along the line that you consider those will be contrary to policy CP13 of our part one of our local plan, policies DM15 and 16 of local plan part two, in that by reason of the number and size of units that result in overdevelopment of the site, that would be out of keeping with the pattern and spatial characteristics of the area to the detriment of the character and appearance of the area.
Thank you. Councillor Clea did mention DM18.
Chairman, I did hear that, but I think having heard from Liz that the Highway Authority do not raise an objection on highway safety matters, I think that would be a difficult reason for refusal to substantiate, although obviously it's a matter for the committee to decide upon.
Yes. So so far, we've got DM15 and 16, which I agree with. And I didn't get the number of the CP policy that has.
13, Chair.
Three of.
One, three. Which is, it talks about high quality design, Chair.
Yeah.
Chair, is there some way that we could include a consideration about worries about biodiversity in this?
Chairman, I don't think so. I mean, this is garden land, isn't it? And residential development wouldn't alter that existing situation.
Well, except that it builds over the garden.
It's within the policy boundary where the principles of that is acceptable, Chair. So I think that would be a difficult reason for refusal to substantiate.
CP13. If I may, CP13, could you just run through which part of CP13 do you think is valid?
Bullet point two talks about the proposal making a positive contribution to the local environment and creates an individual place with a distinctive character. And I think what you're saying is it doesn't do that because it's overdevelopment, Chair.
Well, with respect, I'm not, and our officers didn't.
Well, you don't have to vote for it. So, I mean, whichever way you voted, you don't have to vote for these reasons for.
Certainly won't.
Chair, I'm quite happy with what Mrs. Pinnock has come up with, having read these policies.
Yes, okay. I'm just looking at CP13. Right, yeah, I mean, I have any problem with a design as such. I have a problem with the cramped nature of the site. But we are saying that we are criticizing the design in CP13, aren't we?
Semi-detached rather than, I think the rest of the houses there are all detached, aren't they? This is semi-detached.
They're not, they're mixed.
Okay.
Chairman, I was only going to say, in terms of design, one of those aspects is about its layout and its context. So it's not the design of the built form per se, it's about the contextual design in terms of its footprint on the plot. And I think that would be, it's a high level policy which in this context can underpin override, I mean, sit over the top and underpin DM15 and 16, which are the principal policies that we would rely on in your reasons for refusal.
Yeah, thank you then, thank you. Yeah, I'm happy with DM15 and 16. And any further additions to reasons for refusal, which you may or may not agree with, we'll have a vote on them anyway. Any more from, especially those councillors who voted against it? No?
No, quite happy, Chair.
Can I put those then forward as reasons for refusal? CP13, DM15 and 16. And although I agree with councillor Rutter over the biodiversity, there isn't anything we can hang on that. So I think we're going to have to have a roll call of voting for those reasons, Dave?
Yes, I will start. Reasons to refuse are set out. Those in favour, councillor Clea?
Yes, four, yes.
Councillor Evans?
Yes, I'm in favour.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
Yes.
Councillor Laming? Councillor McLean?
Abstain.
Councillor Ruffel?
Yes.
Councillor Rutter?
Abstain.
And councillor Pearson?
Abstain.
So that's four in favour, one against and three abstentions.
Thank you. So that application is refused for the reasons that we've just discussed. Now, our application theory, councillors, we have one more application which publicly votes against. It's only at the committee because the one of the application comes from an officer of the authority. So I'm in your hands. We were due to start at two, and we've got quite a busy afternoon. Do we want to get rid of agenda item 10 now? Or do you want to come back at two and do it? I think my slight preference, without wanting to influence you, is to get agenda item 10 out of the way. But we have no public speakers on.
I think rather than get rid, should we say consider?
Yes.
Indeed, but happy to.
And decide, yeah, sorry, I don't mean.
Happy to consider now, Chair, thank you.
Yeah, let's do, let's do that then. So we'll move on to, thank you councillor McLean. We'll move on to agenda item 10, which is 20/01532/FR and its replacement of timber and metal balcony screens with glass screen, steel handrail and steel posts at Warner Court, Northman's Drive. And the case officer is Cameron Finch. Cameron, are you doing a presentation?
Yep, we're just trying to find the presentation.
Off you go.
Chairman, I'm sorry, I'm just having trouble sharing the presentation from my.
Okay. And well, I'm still in that gap.
Apologies.
This is the first application of many. If we look over the page, there are several more courts to come in, Regent Stratford and so on. And those haven't come in, they haven't been decided upon because they're waiting on the outcome of this decision. They will just wait for the presentation to appear for us. We have no members of the public, no recommendations on the update sheet, no information on the update sheet.
Chair, is it possible we could be talked through the paper copies? We've all got paper copies. We can read them and.
Well, if we can't get the presentation, we do have photos under mass and, yes. Although I don't know what is going on at the office, can we get the presentation? Or what does Fiona Artwick edit now? Cameron, over to you.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So this is the application for Warner Court, replacement of timber and metal balcony screens with glass screen, steel handrail and steel posts. Okay, so first we have the location plan. Warner Court is outlined in the red outline. For reference, the balconies are located on the eastern elevation of the block of flats. So it's surrounded on the east and to the south by a communal parking area. It's also surrounded by other blocks of flats or part of the same development, which are also receiving new balconies, and these have been applied for. To the north, we have Abbey Hill Road at an elevated ground level, and then a number of residential dwellings beyond. So here we have the aerial photograph, again, Warner Court is outlined, just to show again the placement of the surrounding flats, the residential dwellings to the north, and then also a number of trees directly to the eastern elevation of the flats. So we have the proposed elevations. This shows the balconies all six serving the six flats. So the finish will be satin still finish for balstrows, the railings and the fixedings. And then the glass screens are 10 millimetres thick and they are clear glass. So we have a site photograph taken immediately from the east from the communal parking area. It also shows the existing balcony screens. This is taken from the north from Abbey Hill Road at the elevated ground level. And a final photograph taken further into the communal parking area. And you can just see just beyond the residential dwellings to the north. So recommendation is to permit this application. Include my presentation.
Thank you very much. And so we have no members of the public wanting to speak. And any questions for Cameron on any part of the headings? We start on page 95 and then go on to 96.
No questions indicated, Chair. We have councillor Pearson.
Oh, councillor Pearson.
Sorry, Chair, just a very quick one. I like the idea of the whole concept you're trying to do, but why clear glass, not frosted? I mean, people on those balconies are going to feel quite naked if it's clear glass. Do you know, Cameron?
It hasn't been indicated to me. I do know that the residents were canvassed to get their opinion on what would be the best finish for their screen. So they have been consulted on this, but it hasn't been indicated to me by the agent.
Curious. I would have thought the residents would have been, I mean, I've seen similar thing balconies down in Leon Solent and they generally clear, not clear glass, however.
And there are other applications in which presumably all have clear glass as well.
Yeah, I presume so, yeah.
Yes, I can confirm that.
Currently, there is no glass at all, is there? So that's very clear. Councillor Ruffel has a question as well.
Thank you, Chair. I just need to know the safety of these, this glass, it's, you say, 10mm thick. Is there a safety certificate with it? Can children lean against it?
So in terms of this, this was taken advice that the agent took from building regulation consultant, as the existing ones are a health and safety risk. They have concluded that this is a safe method of balcony screening here, so they are satisfied.
Why is the neck, give it a fall? Is that it, councillor Rutter?
Yes, no more questions, Chair.
Okay. I mean, I will support this because I think it will be a much improvement, a good improvement to the area and from what is there now. And they're not particularly of architectural merit, but this will make them all look much better, I think.
No other debate indicated, Chair.
So this is recommended for approval. So, Dave, if you'd like to take the members through for the vote?
Yes, of course, again, councillor Clea?
Yes, thank you, four.
Councillor Evans?
Four.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
Four.
Councillor Laming? Councillor Laming?
For.
Councillor McLean?
For.
Councillor Raffel?
For.
Councillor Rutter?
For.
And councillor Pearson?
For, on the assumption health and safety is being taken into account.
Yes, councillor Raffel asked that question.
Yes, I know you did.
Yeah, yeah.
So this um application has been approved, subject to the three conditions, page six. And there are also informative ninety-seven, ninety-eight. That brings to a close the business items for the morning.